Before you do the opening, I want to see that video is ready.
Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Zoning and Franchise. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Chair Riley, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I am joined remotely by Chair Salamanca, Councilmember Moya, in the chambers by Chair Lewis, Councilmember Botcher, Councilmember Shulman, and Councilmember Carr. Today, we will hold a public hearing for two proposals in Manhattan. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I am Angelina Martinez, Review Council to the Subcommittee, and I just will ask you to bear with me because I have a few lengthy announcements since we expect a few of you to testify today. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or for those of you here in chambers, please see one of the sergeants' arms to prepare and submit a speaker card, and please, if you are speaking in one of the panels, even if you are just doing Q and A, please make sure you fill out a speaker card as well. Members of the public may also view a livestream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the Chair or I to speak. When the Chair recognizes your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, if you have written testimony you would like to submit, instead of appearing here before the Subcommittee, please email it to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair, as council members may have questions for you. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this hybrid meeting for various technical reasons and pauses to provide, so we ask that you please be patient as we provide everyone a chance to give testimony. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you, Council. I will now open the public hearing on LU 245 related to the arena text amendment proposal in Councilmember Botcher's district in Manhattan. This application seeks a zoning text amendment to the existing zoning resolution section 74-41, which allows arena use by special permit approval from the City Planning Commission. In conjunction with this application, we would be jointly holding a public hearing on LU 246 relating to the Madison Square Garden special permit, also in Councilmember Botcher's district. This application seeks a zoning special permit pursuant to the proposed amended section 74-41 to allow an arena with a maximum capacity of 22,000 seats within the existing 10-story building. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us here in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. We have a lot of speakers signed up for this hearing, so I would like to ask that you be patient, as Council staff is working hard to make sure you all have a chance to speak. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to us at landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to allow Councilmember Botcher to give his opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Riley. October 28, 1963 is one of the most consequential days in our city's history. It is the day that crews began the demolition of Pennsylvania Station, the architectural wonder that McKinn, Mead, and White designed with inspiration from the Acropolis, Roman Baths, and St. Peter's Basilica. It was a transit palace, from its grand waiting halls to its iconic glass ceiling, supported by elegant steel bracing and granite columns. Nearly as shocking as the demolition of McKinn, Mead, and White's Penn Station is what replaced it, a subterranean, drab, undignified, confusing maze of passageways. Cathedral-like ceilings were replaced by ceilings as low as 6 feet 8 inches. Natural sunlight was replaced by fluorescent light. As Yale professor Vincent Scully Jr. said memorably, "One entered the city like a god; one scuttles in now like a rat." In 1963, Penn Station was buried beneath an office tower, Two Penn Plaza, and a 22,000-seat arena, which would be the fourth home of Madison Square Garden. New York City law requires arenas with more than 2,500 seats to get special permits to operate, and MSG received such a permit in 1963 that included a 50-year time limit. In 2013, the City Council granted a 10-year special permit, and this year, MSG is seeking a permanent special permit. Over the past decades, MSG has become part of New York City's DNA, the scene of some of the most iconic events in sports and entertainment history, and a maker of memories for millions of New Yorkers and visitors from around the world. MSG also, unfortunately, sits crouched atop Penn Station, seemingly holding us back from building a train station befitting the greatest city on Earth. At today's hearing, we'll hear from many witnesses and explore many important questions. If the special permit is not renewed, where would the garden go? How much would that cost? Is a great station even possible with MSG remaining in place? Would through running be possible with MSG in place? What kind of process will there be to make these decisions? How do the arena's operations currently impact Penn Station? History's eyes are on us. The decisions that we make now will have tremendous consequences for future generations of New Yorkers. Either we will have a great train station that's worthy of the greatest city in the world, or we'll continue to condemn over 600,000 people a day to an undignified, subterranean experience. As challenging as it'll be to get this right, I am excited about this opportunity, and I feel hopeful about the future of Penn Station for the first time in a long time. I believe we do have it within our power to make transformational change and create a public transportation hub that would make McKinn, Mead, and White proud. And we need to act now. The Council is not going to kick the can down the road for another 10 years. We cannot hold back Penn Station any longer. We must deliver a new Penn Station for New Yorkers, and we must do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Council, can you please call the first panel for this item?
We'll do, Chair, but before I do, I just want to make a quick announcement about the run of show for today. So I just want to know that first, we will take testimony from the administration on the zoning text amendment, and we will do a Q and A session with the administration, and then we will hear from Madison Square Garden representatives on the special permit application and do a Q and A session with Madison Square Garden before we take joint public testimony. So if we could just have the members of the administration join us up here. So the panel for the administration consists of Edith Su Chen, Eric Botzford, and Stephen Johnson.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
If the applicants can please raise your right hand and answer the following question: Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answer to all Councilmember questions? And can you guys just make sure your mic is on before you speak? All right, thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, before you begin, I would just like to ask you to please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Yes, hello. Edith Su Chen, Department of City Planning. Good morning, Chair Riley, Chair Salamanca, and distinguished members of the Subcommittee. I am Edith Su Chen, Executive Director of the Department of City Planning. I am joined by my colleagues Eric Botzford, Manhattan Director at City Planning, and Stephen Johnson, Senior Lead for Special Projects. We are here to speak in support of the Department's text amendment to a zoning special permit that allows an arena of more than 2,500 seats.
I'm sorry, Edith, do you have papers that you want to give us real quick, sergeants?
These are copies of the presentation.
Thank you. Sorry, Edith.
No problem, of course. We are also here to speak in favor of a 10-year special permit for Madison Square Garden. The block where Madison Square Garden sits is one of the most important in the city. It is home to the arena, as well as Penn Station, the nation's busiest transit hub. These two entities have been co-located for 60 years, a center of gravity for commuters, workers, tourists, sports, and music fans, and for all kinds of events. I'm sure everyone in this room is a many-time visitor to this block, whether for a regular commute or a special blockbuster event. This is a location of great civic importance, and here we have an opportunity to do better for all members of the public. Madison Square Garden should provide a world-class environment and high-quality amenities to New Yorkers both inside and outside its walls. And the arena should be a good partner to Penn Station to best serve its hundreds of thousands of travelers every day, including many people whose destination is the garden. That's why we propose new requirements to the arena special permit, to ensure a high-achieving public realm, a better and safer loading plan, and consistency and compatibility with Penn Station. We are pleased with the progress we made on these goals with Madison Square Garden. Through the public process, MSG has committed to creating a much more welcoming public space around the building that will include seating, planting, paving, art walls, lighting, and major new entrance canopies. Madison Square Garden has also agreed to move their truck-loading operations off 33rd Street and to clear the areas around public entrances to the station and the garden itself. To ensure MSG's loading operations have minimal impact on pedestrians and busy sidewalks, the arena will also work with the city's Department of Transportation on a transportation management plan. Finally, and very importantly, MSG has committed to collaborate with the rail agencies, the MTA, Amtrak, and New Jersey Transit, on their plan for reconstruction of Penn Station. A new and improved Penn Station is hugely important for a city, and this is coming alongside the massive gateway project, the most impactful economic driver for the region. Because of these binding commitments, all of which which came through the public review process, we believe a special permit term of 10 years is appropriate. This contrasts with the special permit that was issued a decade ago, in 2013, which had no such commitments for public space, loading, and a more harmonious relationship with Penn Station. My colleague Stephen Johnson will now go through a brief presentation, providing more details on the special permit, the text amendment, and Madison Square Garden's commitments. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Edith. Thank you, Chair Riley, Chair Salamanca, and distinguished members of the Subcommittee. Can we go to the next slide, please? As you're all well aware, this is incredibly complex site in history that began with the demolition of the above-grade portion of Penn Station, and now 60 years later, MSG is the busiest arena in the country, and it sits atop the busiest station, transit hub in the nation. So I will be talking about two actions here. The first is the Department of City Planning's text amendment to the special permit findings, and the second is the MSG special permit that includes those new findings. But to be clear, while these are separate actions, I will be presenting them together. So in order to build an arena of more than 2,500 seats, MSG has 22,000 seats, they needed a special permit, and the CPC approved a special permit in 1963 with a term limit of 50 years. In 1989, MSG came back to the City Planning Commission for minor modifications for, to the special permit for improvements to the internal operations and improvements for the arena. And then in 2013, of course, the City Planning Commission and City Council approved a new special permit for MSG with a term of 10 years. Now I want to take you through a few existing condition slides. Next slide, please. So first, to give you some context of the environment, we have this aerial image that shows MSG and the Two Penn Commercial Office Building, which is on a single zoning lot, and the two buildings are connected by a pedestrian bridge, which crosses over the mid-block driveway, which is also a former taxiway. The taxiway has been closed since 9/11, and MSG uses the north side of the former taxiway for loading operations. And as you can see on the image where it says taxiway on the north side, there's three or four MSG trucks in the loading area. MSG also uses the streets around the arena for loading when necessary for staging. That includes 33rd, 31st, and 8th Avenue, and sites further west by the rail yards. Next slide, please. So this next few images will highlight the public realm around the arena and some of the issues with these open areas. So these are images of the 8th Avenue frontage. It's a blank wall frontage, and this is between 31st and 33rd Street, and you can see air vents and grates on the ground and the high-security bollards on the sidewalk. The ventilation obviously is necessary for the Penn Station ventilation operations. This area is an opportunity to do something related to the civic, a civic gesture for the city related to Penn Station, and to highlight the civic importance of the site, and includes some sort of engaging public realm, activate the space, and make positive impact on the public realm. Next slide, please. So the image on the left is the corner of 33rd and 8th Avenue. 33rd Street is the access point for the trucks for MSG to get into their mid-block loading area. This corner on 8th and 33rd and the 31st Street corner both have Penn Station entrances. And as you can see from the image on the left, you're standing right at the intersection, and you cannot see a sign that says Penn Station. It's very, the signage is not adequate or notable to somebody who's walking down the street. So we believe this is an excellent opportunity and an appropriate location to have a notable civic entrance. And you can see also on the photo on the right, this photo was taken during an event at MSG, and you can see how they have office trailers, rental office trailers on the site, portable toilets on the city streets. Those are not public toilets, those are for the people who are using those yellow trailers. So all of these elements add up to a public realm that is severely lacking in amenities and restrictive of pedestrian movements. Next slide, please. So moving on to the MSG loading operations, the left image shows the loading area with Two Penn on the left and MSG on the right, and the, between the two is the pedestrian bridge that I referenced earlier, earlier in the presentation. This is also the main entrance into the arena. I think MSG has said that 70% of users to the arena patrons come through 7th Avenue and pass over that pedestrian bridge. Now below that is the mid-block driveway, the former taxiway that was closed after 9/11. There is pedestrian access still at this site. It's up against the Two Penn building. You can see a person walking on the sidewalk there. One of the unfortunate design elements of the complex is that the pedestrian bridge has a nine-foot height limit, so trucks cannot pass underneath it. So trucks arriving to load or unload at MSG would not be able to drive in on 33rd and exit on 31st Street. So trucks have to maneuver into that loading area on the left where those people are standing, and then back out the enormous semi-trailer trucks on the 33rd Street and exit on 33rd Street. Now the photo on the right is the main arena truck entrance. Similar to the height limit on the Ped Bridge, this truck entrance has a 12.5-foot clearance into the internal loading area. This height limit was practically outdated from day one for the arena. As soon as it was completed, or shortly thereafter, the height limits of trucks were increased to 13 and 1/2 feet, making the arena unable to have semi-trailer trucks enter into the loading area. So they all load outside in the open area, and the smaller trucks are able to access that area. So the off-street MSG loading area is able to accommodate about six trucks onsite. Trucks pull into the open area, and those forklifts that you see in the right image come out and load and unload from those trucks. Now if there's an event with a large number of trucks, more than six trucks, some of these large events have two dozen trucks, like for Drake and Roger Waters, they park around the arena on the city streets. And then also, if they have sporting events or TV events, they have satellite trucks that station often in the public right-of-way. Next slide, please. So when MSG came back to the department seeking a new special permit, we reviewed the existing findings and found them to be outdated, and the purpose of the special permit is to determine any potential planning impacts of the large arena of that size on the thousands of people moving in and around the arena and in the surrounding area. However, the existing findings seem to focus only on one particular type of transportation, and that's automobiles. That's how cars come to the arena, how they drive around the arena, and where they have access to the parking. Now MSG does not have any accessory parking spaces, they don't have a public parking garage, and most of their patrons come by public transit. So in order to update the findings and incorporate some new important provisions, the department proposed a zoning text amendment, and the findings are generally focused on three broad areas that are outlined on this slide. So the first area is public spaces, open areas, and the civic importance of the site. The second is loading operations, and finally, the last one is the importance of Penn Station as a gateway access point into New York City, and how MSG Arena is appropriately consistent and compatible with transit facilities. So as part of the loading operations, the fourth finding up there, they submitted a, MSG submitted a loading operations plan that was subsequently reviewed by the Department of Transportation, as well as the rail agencies, and they made recommendations to the commission. So the fifth finding on the slide is related to the arena and Penn Station, and how the arena will be consistent and compatible with any proposed future transit improvements, and that they have a harmonious relationship. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to take you through the public realm and loading improvements that the City Planning Commission has approved. So the applicant's original public realm plan was mainly a paving plan with distinctive pavers and pigmented concrete treatments. They also added nine planter benches to some of the open areas and some bike parking. But during the public review process, the ULR process, the department continued working with the applicant team, discussing design concepts, strategies, and possible other public realm improvements. So late in the ULR process, the commission received a series of public realm commitment letters from the applicant team, some with about a week before the vote, and these commitments are outlined on the slide here, along with the original proposed public realm improvements. So MSG has agreed to taking a holistic design approach, a unified and consistent design approach to the area around the arena, and that includes with signage for MSG and for the station, including notable entrances into Penn Station. This will highlight the civic importance of Penn Station. This also includes treatments to the 8th Avenue blank wall, as well as additional seating and landscaping, improved lighting, and decluttering of the area. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to highlight two or three of the public realm improvements. So this is an illustration of the 31st Street and midway, mid-block driveway corner and what the applicant is proposing. They originally proposed two planter benches, but they agreed to add a third, and I think this really highlights how this is now could be a significant public amenity, having social seating with people facing each other, the trees and the landscaping, which is not onsite currently. This has a southern exposure, so we think that'll be great for the trees and the landscaping, and this gives the area a real New York City Pops feeling to it. Next slide, please. So that additional third planter is a concrete example of what MSG is committed to. These next couple of slides will be more focused on conceptual level commitments that they've agreed to. So the applicant has proposed a design concept on the 3D lenticular wall treatment on the 8th Avenue blank frontage. This particular concept has different views depending on where you're standing, where you're sitting, and where you are in relationship to the artwork. So this will not have any advertising signage, no accessory signage, but will be related to the city and celebrating the city and the civic importance of the site, and will be a notable public realm feature at the site. Next slide, please. So the applicant is also committed to providing a unified design scheme, including signage and canopies. So they have retained a graphic design firm, and they have a preliminary design concept to allocate this space to Amtrak and a Penn Station sign. This will create a bolder, more obvious entrance into Penn Station at both the 8th Avenue corners, and this shows a large glass canopy and identifiable signage at the site. Next slide, please. So additionally, MSG has agreed to public realm improvements related to the pedestrian accessible portions of the mid-block driveway, the removable of metal barriers, the movable metal barriers that line everything around the site, and working with DOT and the state to improve sidewalk extensions and curb extensions. Next slide, please. So moving on to the loading operations. In MSG's filed application, they proposed no improvements to their loading operations, and that was in response to the department's new finding related to loading. And as we have seen, the loading area for the arena has issues. So MSG has agreed to keep 33rd Street free of truck staging. 33rd Street has been their preferred staging area for trucks because they can shoot right into the off-street open loading area they have, but this is a great example of how loading impacts the public realm. So by agreeing to keep trucks off staging and parking on 33rd Street, this is, public space is immediately improved at this location. And thinking to the future, this sidewalk could be eventually extended out, the bollards extended out and redesigned, and we could have a shared street at this location. So as part of the new findings, the applicant included a loading operations plan in their application, which outlined their existing conditions. The Department of Transportation reviewed the plan and subsequently recommended a TMP or Transportation Management Plan, and MSG has agreed to prepare and obtain approval of a TMP, which will be working in consultation with DOT and City Planning and reflect DOT freight policies. They have already, MSG has already engaged a firm to look at off-site loading and parking areas. The TMP will focus on these things outlined on the slide, the different bullets, off-street parking, managed access, restricted hours of operation, and MSG is also committed to their own fleet of executive vehicles and forklifts to zero emissions within three years. So as part of these MSG commitments to the loading here and the previous few slides with the public realm, if this application is ultimately approved, MSG is required to return within six months of approval to submit two things to the City Planning Commission, and that's the Transportation Management Plan and the public realm design drawings to the Chair of the CPC. This will ensure that MSG follows through on their agreed-upon commitments. Next slide, please. So the final new finding is related to the consistency and compatibility of the arena with Penn Station and future transit improvements. MSG has agreed to work with the rail agencies and to collaborate on these improvements to Penn Station. The future improvements do not yet have design plans, but there's a general understanding of what these improvements could look like and where they would be located, and you've probably seen a few of these illustrations. We have one up here on the slide that shows the proposed mid-block train hall that the rail agencies are proposing on the loading area of the mid-block driveway. So any changes to the CPC-approved site plan? The areas that are under purview of the commission require that MSG returns. The areas that are under purview of the commission require that MSG returns and get CPC approval of a special permit modification. So the rail agencies are currently working on a design for much-needed improvements to Penn that includes below-grade areas that they control, as well as areas above grade, including areas that MSG controls. So when the rail agencies have reached a benchmark of 30% design development, which is a standard by the industry, MSG must return to the commission for review and approval of their modified special permit. This proposal would include a set of drawings and details and an implementation schedule. The commission would then review the improvements and determine whether the arena is still consistent and compatible. And finally, to wrap up regarding the special permit term, the commission approved a 10-year term. The purpose of the term is to allow for a reappraisal of whether the use continues to meet the relevant findings and conditions. The site has a very complicated history and future, but currently billions of dollars of transportation improvements are moving forward with Gateway along the Northeast Corridor with new Hudson tunnels that lead into Penn Station. And MSG and Penn Station are both very important uses to the city, economically important. And we believe this is an important opportunity to make substantial improvements at Penn Station, and the 10-year term is appropriate. And that wraps up my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I have a few questions. Then I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Bocca. But before I begin, we have been joined by Councilmember Obreyu and Councilmember Brewer. Can you please describe the priority issues that this text amendment is intended to remedy or address?
I'll take that. Thank you, Chair. Yes, our priority issues are very evident in that we wrote them into the text that allows the special permit. As Stephen mentioned earlier, the original text was written in the early '60s, where the priorities were moving folks in private vehicles and getting them to private parking spaces. We needed to modernize the requirements of this special permit. So we included new findings, new requirements, that dealt with public realm, getting a better public realm and pedestrian circulation, you know, worthy of the civic importance of this location, making sure that the loading operations for MSG, you know, made sense and were safe and good for the area. And we also wrote in a new requirement, new finding, that the arena be consistent and compatible with the rail station. Those are our priorities that we put into the text amendment.
Thank you, Edith. And you spoke about commitments in 2013. Could you please describe to me, because you stated that now MSG is trying to work more with transportation and the city? Can you explain to me what commitments were agreed upon in 2013, for the record?
Sure, of course. Frankly, in 2013, there were none of these amenities put into this special permit. None were required, frankly, and none were approved as part of a special permit. You know, there was not a design for public space, there was no loading plan, you know, I think the most memorable-
Were there any commitments?
The most memorable is, of course, that there was a 10-year time limit on that special permit.
Thank you. The CPC reports are not very specific about the need for clear sign above the 8th Avenue entrance that tells the public how to access Penn Station. The existing station entrances are hard to find and unwelcoming. Does DCP have a specific recommendation for improving this condition?
Yes, during the public review process with Madison Square Garden, and as our text amendment moved through the process as well, we made it very clear that it was very important to get clarified signage and clarified markers for the entrances at 8th Avenue in particular, but really throughout the site. And MSG was responsive and came back with a proposal to introduce the glass canopies at the 8th Avenue entrances that mark Penn Station, in fact. That is an important commitment that we looked to and was included in our approval of the special permit.
Thank you. Similarly, MSG's 8th Avenue wall is blank and unwelcoming. The CPC reports requires a graphic treatment to improve this condition, but does not provide specifics. As the planning agency of the city, does DCP recommend a specific type of graphic treatment here, and why?
At Department of City Planning and the CPC, we did not specify the content of the art wall. However, we are very pleased that MSG has committed to content that is celebratory of New York City and perhaps even of this particular location. You know, MSG panel will be up soon, so you should ask the question to the next panel as well. But I do want to stress that no advertising is allowed as part of these walls. These walls, the treatment of the walls is for art expression and, again, of a celebratory nature of New York City.
Thank you. Taking a step back, is unusual for these types of details not to have been settled by the time of a special permit application comes to the council. Why is this case here?
First, I'll point out that this is not unusual for city planning approval. Sometimes, a design or a traffic management plan does come after the Eulur approval. And we have a number of cases, such as at the American Copper Building, East River Realities building with the plaza, the design came after the Eulur approval. Astor Place, the Maki Building, again, that design came after the approval. Western Rail Yards, when the public spaces are designed for that very large site plan, the developer, the applicant, will have to submit designs to the City Planning Chair at that time. So, oh, and we also have a traffic management plan for Pier 17 in the Seaport that also came at a later date. So this is, it's not unusual. It has certainly happened in the past. I beg your pardon. You had another part of the question, and I've-
No, I just wanted to know why is this case here, but you stated that this usually happens.
Well, I would like to say one thing, that at time of the public hearing, the CPC, the City Planning Commission public hearing, we at the department, we believed that there was not enough presented by Madison Square Garden in terms of the public realm plan or a loading plan. But from the time of the CPC hearing to its vote, there really was a sprint finish, and a successful sprint finish, and Madison Square Garden was responsive to the request and frankly, to the requirements of the findings in the text.
Thank you. Would you agree that the arena benefits from its placement on top of the country's busiest train station in terms of access to the arena?
Absolutely, no question. We are a transit-oriented city, and with the department and the commission, we support transit-oriented development. We certainly want to move people across the city using public transit. It is the greenest, most efficient, most social way. It's a great way to move people throughout the city. We especially think for a large use such as an arena, where you have 22,000 spectators attending, its co-location at a transit facility is hugely beneficial all around, to the arena and to the city and to the area.
And what percentage of event goers access the arena through the station or connected subways?
Specific numbers MSG can provide, but throughout the public process, MSG, and we have been using numbers, about 50% to 60% of MSG's visitors arrive by public transit.
50%?
50 to 60. 50 to 61 is the number that was submitted in the application.
Okay. And one last question before I pass to Councilmember Bocca. A concern was, I believe, the loading dock. You said that it was unable to go from once 31st Street to 33rd, I believe you said, Stephen?
33rd to 31st.
33rd to 31st.
Or vice versa, either way, they can't go.
Do you have a recommendation on how MSG could actually address this? Because it's kind of concerning that a huge tractor, 18-wheeler is going to be backing on a very busy street. So is there any recommendation on how they could address this issue?
I think our recommendation focuses on what can be done through the TMP, the Transportation Management Plan. MSG has stated repeatedly how raising the pedestrian bridge a few feet is difficult to do, and I'm sure you will hear that later today. There are plans that have envisioned moving trucks into the arena or refiguring the mid-block. But for the special permit application and text amendment now, we're focusing on getting trucks off the right-of-way of city streets and working on a Transportation Management Plan with the Department of Transportation to address truck loading issues.
Thank you. I'm going to yield my time. Councilmember Bocca?
Thank you. When the special permit was last approved in 2013, a major focus of that approval was moving Madison Square Garden. At the time, City Planning Chair Amanda Burden said that the best possible outcome would be a relocated Madison Square Garden. This time, the City Planning Commission's reports do not really include those recommendations. It's not emphasized. Why is that?
The City Planning Commission was looking at the application before it, which is for an arena at this location. The special permit, as CPC approved, does not preclude moving of MSG to another location should there be an identified site, should there be, you know, all the movement necessary to relocate. But the application before the City Planning Commission was about an arena at this particular location. And we think it was, we thought it's very, very important to improve the requirements and the findings of the special permit so that the arena could, you know, be, you know, could be more high-achieving in its public realm and loading and in terms of its harmonious relationship with Penn Station at the later reconstruction.
Can you clarify how the public realm improvements in your presentation relate to a redesign of Penn Station? I think most people who see the presentation might think these are nice, but they could be described as like tweaks when something far more transformational is needed. Do you really think that they go far enough in addressing the need for a long-term solution here?
Let me start off by saying, we at the department, we are very excited for a far more transformational Penn Station and public realm around Penn Station and MSG. I know there have been very exciting renderings, you know, out in the public. And again, we're very excited for much-needed improvements to Penn Station. When the rail agencies develop a design for the new station, and in particular, when the design is at 30% completion, when the design is at 30% completion, MSG will have to come back to the commission to demonstrate that the arena is indeed consistent and compatible with the rail station. The current public realm improvements that you see now and the current loading, they are important. We believe it's really important to get improvements now. It may be a couple of years before we see a plan from the rail agencies. It may be more than a couple of years. We don't know right now how much time it will be, but we think it's really important that we see some improvements to the public space and to the loading plan immediately, as soon as possible.
How did City Planning select the benchmark of 30% design development? Why 30%?
30% design is an industry standard. It is a very well-noted marker in the development of a design, and it's usually also reflected in contractual agreements. In consultation with other city agencies, in particular DDC, we felt very comfortable that 30% design was the appropriate marker for the rail agencies to advance their design for reconstruction to MSG and to, frankly, and to the department so that the compatibility and consistency finding can be reexamined again.
2013, the permit was extended by 10 years. Nothing's happened. Not much has happened at all. You're recommending 10 years. What's the rationale for the 10-year term?
To start, the applicant, Madison Square Garden, has met the findings that we put forward in the text. So that is, you know, that is the gating. That's the first hurdle. Does MSG make the findings, excuse me, can the City Planning Commission make the findings that MSG has met these requirements? And the answer to that is yes. Next, when we're looking at a term, when we're thinking about a term, as my colleague mentioned, you know, 10 years does give time to make sure that the obligations are being met. There will be improvements that have to be built and constructed. There will also be, that also allows for time for the rail agencies to develop a plan for the new rail station, and that 30% design will then come back to the City Planning Commission in terms of reviewing Madison Square Garden arena use vis-à-vis the consistency and compatibility. There are a number of other projects, as we all know, hugely important projects, you know, Gateway. So all of this together led us to 10 years as an appropriate term for this special permit.
I'm going to yield to my colleagues for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Bocca. We've been joined remotely by Councilmember Hanks. Is there any council members with any questions for this panel? Okay, Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. In the New York Post, I don't usually mention the New York Post, Robert Yarrow had an editorial, I'm sure you saw, saying four years. He has great presence, former head of RPA and an author. So my question is, I won't be here in 10 years. I looked at the panel, I don't think any of us are going to be. Maybe Edith will still be there, I don't know, but anybody else. It's too much time. And so I guess my question is, what, from your perspective, you said in 20, I was here in 2013. I voted, I guess, for 10 years. My question is, you said that there wasn't anything sort of in that special permit that MSG had to do? Is that sort of what you're saying? But I was, can't imagine that Corey Johnson or the rest of the committee said you could just have 10 years, you don't have to do anything. According to Robert Yarrow, there were certain commitments that were not made. So I want to know whether there are any commitments between 2013 and 2023, from your perspective, that were not made by MSG? And then, second, why would we not try to do four years or something less? Because we can be here to know what is it that is in this plan or is not. And I guess I would say if four years, everything is accomplished, then okay, maybe we can do as we often do. You can have more time. But to me, 10 years is too much time. So the first question is, was there anything in 2013 to 2023 that the garden was supposed to do and didn't, or MSG? And then, second, why not four years?
In 2013, the special permit was really underachieving, the text, the zoning text. It really focused on private vehicles and parking and movement through residential districts of those vehicles. It did not have, the special permit text itself, did not have the much more high-achieving regulations that we have proposed as part of the special permit text. So while there was lots of discussion about moving MSG, it was not a requirement, it could not have been a requirement, of the special permit, given its really limited scope and limited requirements. So here, we're at a new era where we do have more high-achieving requirements for the text. So we've talked about that at length. Councilmember, you asked about the term, why 10 years? So again, I would like to just stress that it does allow for implementation of these requirements. It also allows for an appraisal of the arena vis-à-vis the 30% design drawings when the rail agency is ready for that. And it also allows for- for that. And it also allows for appraisal of, you know, really big moves in the area, you know, such as Gateway. So we think 10 years is a good amount of time, an adequate amount of time for this special permit.
Okay, so two things. So you're saying that even though it was pedestrian, unfriendly supposedly, and car-related and all that, was there anything in that, and I should know this because I voted for the friggin' thing, is there anything in that that MSG did not live up to? That's number one. And then second, would you still, would you consider, I know you've already voted for this, but we're going to have to vote too, four years and then more if you are, as I would say, on good behavior, MSG? So the first question was there, did they live up to, even if it wasn't a good list, did they live up to what they were supposed to when we voted in 2013?
My assessment would be yes. They, because the, there were very little requirement within the special permit. There had been discussions of introducing bench seating and some planters. Those were, those were not included as part of the final approval.
Okay. Because Robert Yarrow said they did not. That's what I'm asking. And then finally, you're not interested in four years plus more if, if good behavior?
The City Planning Commission has weighed in, and their determination was 10 years.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. I think that was similar to the question I was asking you, Edith. If there were any commitments in 2013 and did MSG follow through with those commitments? So it looks like they were, there weren't a lot of commitments, but the commitments that were there look like MSG followed through with them. Is that correct to say?
They, they have been in compliance with the special permit that was issued in 2013.
Okay. Thank you. There being no more questions for this panel, this panel's excused. I'm going to call up the next panel, which is MSG, but we're going to take a quick pause, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Garden of Dreams Foundation, which provides life-changing opportunities for more than 400,000 local kids and their families, and has contributed $75 million for capital grants, scholarships, tickets, and other mentoring programs. Next slide. Throughout the special permit process, we have been committed to working collaboratively with all key stakeholders towards a shared goal of improving Penn Station and the surrounding area. And I'm proud to say that the application before you today clearly reflects that collaboration. For example, we listened to city planning and made significant commitments to create a welcoming and vastly improved public realm surrounding the garden. This includes two new glass canopies that will add important visibility to Penn Station's entrances, additional planters and seating, and artistic treatments to beautify the Eighth Avenue facade. Taken together, these commitments would add a level of grandeur to a civic space as important as Penn Station and benefit commuters, guests, and pedestrians alike. Additionally, we have worked with city planning on commitments that would improve our truck-loading operations, including moving trucks off 33rd Street, hiring flaggers to ensure safe truck travel to our loading area, and to make our operations more efficient, and developing a detailed transportation management plan with the Department of Transportation. Because these efforts are important to both the community and MSG, we've already started moving forward on a number of these commitments. And as we've continuously said, MSG is committed to working closely with the rail agencies to ensure the garden remains compatible with any future improvements to Penn Station. As you know, the garden and Penn Station have successfully operated on the same site for more than six years, and we look forward to continuing our work together in the station's next chapter. Finally, I'd like to address the term of our special permit. Contrary to some arguments, a longer-term special permit would expedite, not hinder, any Penn Station improvement project. A long-term special permit would provide certainty to the rail agencies that after spending $7 billion-plus in public funding to renovate Penn Station, a future U-Lot process would not undermine that work. The garden is a key part of the governor's, the mayor's, and the rail agency's shared long-term vision for Penn Station, and it's appropriate to secure that vision with a long-term special permit. I will now turn it over to Elise Wagner from Kramer Levin to formally present our application.
Thank you, Rich. I'm Elise Wagner from Kramer Levin Land Use Council to Madison Square Garden.
Please, I don't think your mic is on.
Oh, thank you. Elise Wagner, Kramer Levin Land Use Council to Madison Square Garden. This is an application for a special permit in perpetuity for the continued operation of the Madison Square Garden arena. Next. The arena is located on a super block that also contains the Two Penn Office Building and above and below-grade Penn Station facilities. This slide shows the complex but well-organized pedestrian and vehicular circulation on the block. As shown by the purple arrows, the main entrance to the arena, where 70% of guests arrive for a typical event, is at the eastern end of MSG at the second level. Pedestrians arriving from 7th Avenue can access the entrance by two breezeways that run through Two Penn and lead to the Chase Square Pedestrian Bridge, which spans the mid-block driveway. Next. MSG is surrounded by at-grade open areas. The open areas consist of designated pedestrian-accessible areas, shown in gray, and exterior loading areas for the arena, Two Penn, and Penn Station, shown in white. Next. This drawing shows the arena facilities in gray. Those are the areas that are subject to the special permit. The other uses on the site, including the theater, the Amtrak Rotunda, and Penn Station and Two Penn loading facilities above grade, and Penn Station below grade, are not subject to the special permit and are shown in white. Next. As Rich mentioned, MSG has made a number of commitments that will significantly enhance the public realm around the arena. Next. These include decorative pavers, 10 planter benches, weather-protected bicycle parking, new planter boxes, and a number of additional design concepts based on working closely with the Department of City Planning. These include, next, large glass canopies with internally illuminated signs for the Penn Station entrances at 31st and 33rd Streets and 8th Avenue. Next, a unified design language for MSG and Penn Station signage. Next, a modified design for the open area at the southeast corner of the site, incorporating a total of three large planter benches in a social seating configuration. Next, a graphic art installation for the building's 8th Avenue wall to enliven the space for pedestrians on both sides of 8th Avenue. We are moving forward quickly to develop these proposals. Next. MSG has made significant commitments to improve its truck-loading operations, reflecting important input from city planning and DOT. As one of the busiest arenas in the world, MSG could not operate without carefully orchestrated loading operations. Next. The arena's internal loading facilities are challenged by low vertical clearances and other structural conditions that cannot be practically modified. MSG has developed a complex set of loading protocols that allow it to operate with minimal impacts on vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Next. The onsite loading area can accommodate up to seven semi-trucks for concerts and special events. For events requiring more than seven semi-trucks, MSG uses the adjacent streets for load-in, load-out, or for staging. Next. These are photographs of trucks within the onsite loading area. Next. And another photo showing the forklifts that bring equipment up into the arena. MSG obtains permits in advance from the mayor's Office of Film, Theater, and Broadcasting to allow loading and staging activities in the adjacent streets. In collaboration with city planning and DOT, MSG has committed to a number of changes. MSG will eliminate the parking or staging of trucks along 33rd Street between 7th and 8th Avenue, use flaggers or security personnel to walk trucks along 33rd Street, and work with DOT to prepare a traffic management plan for MSG's loading operations. The traffic management plan may include restrictions on hours for commercial vehicular traffic, identification of an off-site location for truck staging, designated loading for security checks, and increased reliance on zero-emissions vehicles. Next. MSG's special permit application is being reviewed along with the text amendment proposed by city planning. Next. And then next. The text amendment requires the arena to meet a number of new findings, including that the arena is appropriately consistent and compatible with adjacent transit facilities. As Rich said, MSG has cooperated and will continue to cooperate with the rail agencies in redeveloping Penn Station. The City Planning Commission's resolution establishes a process whereby MSG would return to the commission when the rail agencies have advanced a Penn Station plan to 30% design development. I will now turn things back to Rich.
So I'd just like to quickly introduce the members of the team: Joel Fisher, EVP, Bobby Casanova, who runs the garden on a daily basis, and behind me, we have our consultant, Kazi Jajina, structural engineer from Samarood. With that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Before I begin my questioning, we've been joined by Majority Leader Keith Powers. I'm going to ask a few questions, then I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Botcher, and then the remainder of our committee. How many events a year does the arena have?
We have approximately 250 events per year.
What is the capacity of the arena?
Depending upon the type of event, up to 20, 22,000.
How many days of the year is the arena sold out?
Most of those events, I would say, at least 60% of those events are sold out.
How many tickets, on average, are sold in total over one year?
For just the arena?
I'd rather not speculate on that.
Yeah, we'll put it in writing what the...
Could you put it in writing and submit it to the council?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Where do all these, the people, come from, just within the city or larger region of participants in these events?
Larger region, the tri-state area, mostly.
What percentage of event-goers access the arena through Penn Station and the connected
As the Department of City Planning noted, we stated in our application that about 50 to 61% of the guests to Madison Square Garden come by public transit.
How did you get that data?
From DHB, the traffic engineer and environmental consulting firm that was retained by the garden and prepared our environmental materials.
Thank you. Which Penn Station entrances and exits do event-goers use?
They're really using all of them: 8th Avenue, 7th Avenue, every entrance that you can get out of Penn Station, they're using all of them.
At an average show, how many event-goers make use of each state entrance?
I think we'll need to get back to you exactly in writing on that answer.
But as we've said, about 70% of patrons come from 7th Avenue.
From 7th Avenue?
From 7th Avenue, through the Two Penn breezeways and into the garden, over the Chase Square Pedestrian Bridge and into the garden.
Okay. What time of the days do event-goers use this entrance and exit on Penn Station?
Typically, it's around 6 o'clock. Most of our events start at 7:00 or 7:30, so it's around 6 o'clock. There are a number of events that we have during the day, so depending upon the time of event, our doors are usually about an hour to an hour and a half prior to the event that they...
Let's get specific. So I know you guys are having a huge concert then this month, it's the Drake concert.
That's correct.
And looking online, I think they have the Barclay setting down, there's a lot of people lining up to get in the concert. So typically, you say at 6:00 PM, do you guys typically get a line outside for a big concert like this prior to 6:00 PM?
Not typically. I mean, there's a lot of times when people are lining up hoping that tickets open up for the show, but people that actually have tickets are coming right around when our doors open or a little bit after.
Okay. And you're able to expedite them in rather quickly?
Yes.
Okay. The loading report you submitted as part of your application explains the loading challenges that you have. Why does MSG want to keep operating such a large arena in one of the busiest sections of the country's busiest cities, excuse me, and on top of the nation's busiest train
My name is Bobby Casanova, General Manager of Madison Square Garden. We've developed over a number of years an efficient operational process to load all events within to our venue. So although we do sit atop a transit facility, we have figured out a way to process and operate efficiently while minimizing vehicular and pedestrian traffic and maintaining safety at all times.
I asked city planning about the low vertical clearance, and that seems to be a big issue. Why wasn't this included in your proposal into addressing this since loading has been a huge issue within the community for so many years?
I think for this question, we'll have our structural engineer, Kazi Jajina, answer.
Just state your name for the record in the organization. Kazi Jajina, Principal at Severed Associates, Structural Engineers.
Counsel, do we have to swear him in before he answers?
He was sworn in as part of the panel.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So the bridge between Two Penn and the garden is not just a bridge. Since it used to be a taxiway, it's a column-free structure. The roof level of the bridge is really the main structural supporting element. The other level that is below that, where people walk, is actually suspended from the roof level. But the roof level also supports all the ice-making equipment and the air conditioning and dehumidification equipment that is needed to run the ice rink. It also supports the six columns, so there are four stair towers, but in between the two stair towers that face Penn Station, Two Penn, there's a concourse level. That concourse has six columns that support it beyond the perimeter of the arena, and those six columns are supported by the roof structure of that bridge. If I need to raise that bridge, I need to essentially remove all the mechanical equipment that supports the dehumidification, the air conditioning, and the ice rink. I need to essentially dismantle or shore the concourse levels 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 for all the six columns, but I can't shore because the taxiway is sitting over Penn Station, so my shoring towers have to go all the way down to track level. So I am sort of stuck where I am. That's the reason why it's really difficult to do anything. You can always have a solution, but there are solutions that are just not practical sometimes.
Thank you. Do you agree that being so close to Penn Station helps event-goers access the arena?
Absolutely. I think, as Edith from City Planning said, I think it is the best location for an arena and for the fans and the guests that come. It makes it really easy for everybody to get there and creates a lot less vehicular traffic around the area or anywhere in the city. So I think it's the best location that any arena in the world could possibly be.
Okay. To address the public realm, I want to talk a little bit about the improvements. The CPC reports clearly state that you did not fully engage with DCP until very late in the application process. Given that you are asking permission to bring over 20,000 people on the most of the days of the years to one of the busiest locations in the city, public realm improvements are critical to your application. Applications of this size spend months, if not years, thinking about the public realm. And here is MSG presenting a half-baked plan that CPC could only improve by imposing conditions in its reports. Why did MSG not engage with the city earlier in this process?
So, as the city planning team made clear, we've been engaged with them for the better part of a year. We've been in close partnership, discussing a number of issues and concerns over, again, the better part of the year. And we're glad to say that we, and again, as co-signed by City Planning, have made a number of commitments that dramatically improve both the public realm as well as loading. One of the things that Edith Suchen said, and I wrote this down as a quote, is that "It's not unusual that things come together late in the process." Right? That's a quote from her, as she did a recitation of a number of other projects throughout the city that happened later along. But to be clear, we want to be cooperative. We have been cooperative. We will continue to be cooperative and collaborative with, and by the way, not just with the city and city planning, but with all involved stakeholders.
Okay, I'm going to ask one more question, then I'm going to do a second round. I'm going to allow Councilmember Botcher to go. Beyond what CPC has imposed, what else can you do to improve the public space around the arena and actually take into account the thousands of people your event brings in on nearly a daily basis?
Well, I think that we're going to continue to work with not only city planning, but with all the other stakeholders, and we are open to any suggestions at all from city council, and we are willing to do anything that we do, that we all believe will be best for the area. We also have to take into account, obviously, the flow of people, because there's a lot of people, whether it's our events or Penn Station. So you have to be, you have to create a good balance, which we feel that we have, but we are open to any suggestions at all to work together collaboratively with everybody involved to make it as great a public realm as it can possibly be.
Okay. I'm going to come back for a second round. Councilmember Botcher?
It's commonly known that in the past, MSG has shown openness to moving the garden. During the Spitzer administration, there were discussions about moving it on top of Moynihan, now Moynihan Train Hall. Can you tell us about what other options have been considered by MSG over the years?
So, yes, you're absolutely correct. We worked for a good two years on architectural plans to move to the Moynihan Station. Unfortunately, not due to us, but due to other factors, that didn't happen. We would have loved if that happened. We felt that that was also right on top of the transportation hub, so we were very happy about that. You know, I want to clear up a misconception about previous comments that I made about moving across the street, that we have no plans to move and we are not interested in moving. We don't own land across from 7th Avenue, and even discussing the garden and anywhere else, it just should be a non-starter, since it's estimated that any plan to relocate the garden would cost approximately $8.5 billion in public funding, and we believe a sum like that is better spent on New York's many other priorities. I think that the rail agencies, the governor, the borough president, city planning, have all proposed plans improving Penn Station, but all have been based on MSG remaining in its current location.
The statement you're referring to is a statement that you made at Community Board Five.
Correct.
When you were asked about the potential of moving MSG east of 7th Avenue to the block where the Pennsylvania Hotel once stood, and you said that, "Well, that would probably satisfy us, but ultimately, who's going to pay for that? Where's the money? That plan hasn't come to us, but that would satisfy us being right on top of a transportation hub." So essentially, what you're saying is you'd be open to it if a plan was presented to you?
No, again, we're very happy where we are now, and we don't plan on moving, and there is no plan. So I just, I think it's unfair for me or anybody to comment on a hypothetical.
What about the plan that was pitched to you by Related for the Western Rail Yards? Could you tell us a little bit about what that proposal entailed?
That was a very quick one-meeting where they talked about it. They talked about a casino over there along with the garden. We've stated earlier that we feel, and Edith stated also, that having an arena of our nature on top or very close to a transportation hub is extremely important, is important to the city, is important to all our guests and all our fans, and that proposal just never went anywhere or any further discussions, other than one very quick meeting about an idea that just never took shape and isn't, quite honestly, near a transportation hub that would be good for all our fans and guests.
So you rejected it immediately and didn't give it any...
It wasn't a matter of rejection or not. It was just, as I said, a very quick discussion and a thought that Related brought to us that out of courtesy, and as Rich has said, we're going to cooperate with everybody to listen, and if there's anything that makes sense, we would always listen and cooperate.
How much does Madison Square Garden pay annually in property taxes for this arena?
As you know, back in 1982, the legislature passed a bill that, in essence, says so long as the New York Knicks and Rangers play their home games at MSG, they don't have to pay, we don't have to pay property taxes.
Do you think it's fair that such a profitable enterprise should not pay property taxes to the people of New York?
So, Councilmember, very respectfully, we're here today to discuss the land use, a land use process, the special permit. As I stated in immediately answering the question, this, what you're referencing, is a state legislative action, that it's not for this body? And so respectfully, we're going to decline from commenting any further.
You can decline from commenting on it, but the people who are here want to know, because we've heard so many constituents reaching out about MSG's tax exemption, not abatement exemption. So if you could just answer, how much annually is that exemption for?
So, again, that's not for this body, but if we're going to talk about governmental subsidies, every single arena, every single stadium in New York State and the city that houses a professional team gets hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in governmental subsidies.
Do any of those...
We're no different.
Do any of those arenas sit on top of the, one of the largest transportation hubs in the country?
We're the only one in Midtown Manhattan above Penn Station. But again, very respectfully, that discussion is not appropriate for this land use meeting.
I'd like to get a better understanding of what your coordination with the railroads means. How, if your permit is extended any length of time, how would you coordinate with the railroads on any future plans?
So just coordination is simply having conversations with them, having them walk the property with our engineers, with our architects, to make sure, from a structural standpoint, certain things that can and can't be done. This has to be over, you know, weeks, months, details, drawings, and so on and so forth. So we stand, and the rail agencies know this, and we've had a number of conversations with them over the last year or so. We stand at the ready to meet with them and discuss with them. We have conversations planned in the next few weeks. We've had conversations over the last few months. So that's what collaboration and cooperation means to us.
The changes that, the improvements that city planning has put in its report, do you believe, do you really believe that those changes in the presentation are sufficient for Madison Square Garden to get a permanent special permit?
Thank you, certainly. Madison Square Garden proposed a number of improvements initially, and through cooperation and collaboration with city planning, additional improvements were proposed. And I would suggest specifically, the civic importance of Penn Station is captured by the new proposed Penn Station canopies with the large internally illuminated signs. And it was earlier mentioned that sometimes people have trouble finding the entrances to Penn Station. Well, this will create a real beacon for people who are looking for Penn Station and create a clear distinction between entrances to the garden and Penn Station. The canopies will be substantially larger than the existing entrance structures and will extend over significantly... will extend over significantly larger portions of the public spaces, bringing visual prominence to the entrances and reinforcing the relationship between the public realm and Penn Station. Similarly, the proposed 3D lenticular art wall along Eighth Avenue will create a more attractive and dynamic public-facing frontage and greater visual interest for pedestrians that celebrates New York City and the community. And more generally, the civic importance of Penn Station is captured by the quality of design and materials of the decorative pavers, planter benches, and other proposed amenities within the public space. I would mention that the architect of all these changes is Signee Nielsen, a very well-regarded landscape architect who worked both on, who's worked for Borneo on Two Penn, who worked on Moynihan Station, has worked for Amtrak. She's out of the country today, otherwise she would have been here to testify. But she's, was an important part of working with the city planning and the Garden to create these really, these upgrades to the area surrounding the Garden.
Do you really believe, though, that these changes, canopy here, a sign there, a wall mural, are sufficient to, for MSG to get a permanent special permit? Do you think for the person who uses Penn Station, who's underground with no natural light, with six-foot-eight ceilings, are these improvements persuasive to them, do you think?
Absolutely. This is a permit for an arena. The arena needs to satisfy the special permit findings. As city planning said, those findings relate to, the old findings related to transportation, but the newer findings related to public space, loading, and compatibility with the rail agencies. City planning determined in its, in its report that the arena is today compatible with Madison Square Garden. And at such time as the rail agencies come forward with a plan that is 30% developed, we will come back and there will be determination of compatibility in the future. So I would suggest absolutely yes. The findings have been made, and therefore MSG should get a perpetual special permit.
What do you think of the MTA's proposals for Penn Station? What they've put out there? What role do you see yourselves playing in that? How do you react to their renderings that they've put out?
So I think in answer to that question, it's a little early because, as they've said, they don't have any established plans. We've seen great pictures that look great, and we are, we have met with them many times. I have a lot of respect for Jamie Torres Springer and his staff. We have a good relationship, I believe. And we will continue to work with them, not only when they come to the 30% drawings, but throughout the entire process. As Rich just mentioned, we're trying to set up a meeting right now with them so we can give them input about the arena that will help them develop their plans. But it's just too early because, as it's been stated many times, they don't have those plans yet. They are working on it, and we know that. And we will help in every way possible to ensure that those plans, our goal as a company is to see the greatest Penn Station you can possibly imagine, along with a great arena that can operate efficiently as we do now.
What do you think of ASTM's proposal for Penn Station? And what role do you see yourselves playing in that?
It's the same answer. We'll work with them, and we've said we'll cooperate with any group that has a plan. I think that ASTM has taken us, taken us up on our offer, which was really both, to both the MTA, the rail agencies, as well as ASTM, to avoid any conflict of interest, that we offered up the use of our consultants, Kausi Jajina who's here, and people from ME, which is an engineering firm, to use them because they actually, Severwood actually built the Garden back in 1963, that company. And they know our building better than any consultants or engineers in the world. So we offered that up, and we continue to offer that up. ASTM, in answer to your question, did take advantage of that. So we don't have, we don't, we ultimately don't make that decision. So we don't have a horse in the race on that one, other than we will cooperate with everybody. I will say, though, that based on the work that we've seen that ASTM has done, their plans are a lot further along, a lot further along.
You're probably going to say that this doesn't relate to the special permit. But the constituents of mine who are here, they want to know, is Madison Square Garden still using facial recognition technology to ban attorneys involved in litigation against them from entering the arena?
So you're prescient? Because that's exactly what we're going to say. It's not, you know, something that's before this land use committee. What we will say is that we abide by all state, federal, and local laws when it comes to our use of facial recognition technology. That facial recognition is a tool that's deployed by retailers, other sporting arenas around both the city and the world. And our use is in full compliance with any existing laws.
I'm going to interpret that as a yes. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, councilmember Botcher. I'm going to ask my second round of questions before I turn it over to my colleagues to ask theirs. I want to talk about loading again. The public realm around the arena is terrible. But on top of that, pedestrians have to navigate around your trucks on 33rd Street, 31st Street, and Eighth Avenue, and the sidewalk itself. A property owner cannot simply take over the surrounding streets for their personal benefits, yet this is what MSG is doing. Is it correct that you proposed no changes to your current loading plans in your application?
No, Chair, that is not correct. But if you're allowing me a minute to clarify, there are a number of changes that we have proposed in collaboration with city planning and DOT. We are committed to a number of additional measures that will facilitate the concept of converting 33rd Street to a shared street and to ensure that the loading operations continue without unduly affecting vehicles or pedestrians. MSG will eliminate the parking or staging of trucks along 33rd Street between Seventh and Eighth Avenues. We will use flaggers and venue security personnel to walk each truck down 33rd Street from Eighth Avenue and into the MSG loading area to ensure no conflicts with pedestrians. We will work with DOT, as mentioned earlier, by city planning to prepare a traffic management plan for MSG's loading operations. Traffic management plan will include conducting a study of available off-site parking locations for trucks in close proximity to the arena. Research of available locations has already begun. Restrictions on hours for commercial vehicular traffic. Designated locations for security checks. And increased reliance on zero emissions vehicles.
Thank you. This sounds amazing. But in your original application, did you include any of this?
Through further discussion with city planning and continued talks, these are areas that we agreed would benefit the community while also allowing us to maintain our efficient operations.
This is why it's important always to begin, from the beginning, with the community. So thank you for these new improvements that you're going to have at this location. Is it correct that you currently are using the taxiway for loading and parking your equipment?
That is incorrect, sir. We use the Ten Penn loading area. We do not use the taxiway. It's actually blocked off as a pedestrian walkway between Penn Station and the Two Penn Vent Building.
The approved plans indicate that the areas around the arena and significant sections of the taxiway are designated pedestrian accessibility, accessible open areas. What are you doing to ensure the taxiway is open and inviting to the public? Because it seems your loading operations have just taken over the taxiway, even though you just said that it hasn't.
So just to clarify, maybe we could put up Slide Six, if that's still possible?
Can we put up back Slide Six?
So as has previously been mentioned, this private driveway is called the taxiway because before 9/11, it was used for taxis. And then it was closed for, I believe by the NYPD, for security reasons. So the northern end of that private driveway, where you can see the green arrow, that's the entrance into the internal MSG loading area. But outside of that is an area that has always been used by MSG for loading. So the western side of what people refer to as the taxiway is, has always been used by loading and is designated that way on the city planning approved plans from 10 years ago and in the past. Similarly, if you look at the south end of the taxiway, and just to be clear, it's the area east of Madison Square Garden of the circular building. So if you look at the south end, that, there are two arrows, one on the west, one on the east. The one on the west is the Amtrak loading area, and the one on the east is the Two Penn loading area. So that area has always been designated as loading for those two facilities. In addition, the middle portion has always been used for ingress and egress from, for patrons and others from Seventh Avenue leading across the pedestrian bridge, I'm sorry. The pedestrian bridge is above, but at the lower level, there is an ability for people to move back and forth from Two Penn to Penn Station. And that's, you can see the arrows there in purple, which is the pedestrians. And that area in the middle has always been used for pedestrians to move back and forth. So there really is a misconception that Madison Square Garden has taken over the taxiway. That's just simply not true.
Is it correct that the CPC in its approval has prevented you from parking semi-trucks on 33rd Street, a shared street intended for people, not trucks?
So working collaboratively with city planning, we have offered to not park trucks on 33rd Street between Seventh and Eighth Avenue. This will make it easier to convert this space into a shared street in the future. And this is an example of our collaboration that is not just true during the special permit process, but continually as we are at the ready to work together now and in the future. And we always welcome suggestions to improve our operations. We continually look for ways to optimize our loading, including minimizing interference with surrounding street traffic and, most importantly, pedestrians.
Again, why are you not actively proposing ways to improve in a meaningful way your loading operations?
I think we have taken steps to improve the loading operations. You know, it's not a problem that is unique to Madison Square Garden. It's a function of hosting events at a venue in a dense urban environment. Barclays Center is no different, as a comparable sports and entertainment venue within New York City. I know and can speak from experience, having served as Vice President of Events there for five years. Very similar structure in terms of staging nearby trucks around the venue for easy access in and out of the loading zone to keep things on schedule. Many other city businesses, aside from arenas, also require trucks parked at times in the streets. You know, that said, we remain committed to optimizing our loading for MSG and the community. We have developed, again, that best-in-class loading operation over the years, and we continually look to maximize the efficiency of our operation. The goal is always to accommodate as many trucks in our compound as possible to get as many as possible off the streets.
Totally understood. And we totally understand Barclays, but Barclays is not located in the middle of the busiest city in the nation. So I'm still trying to understand why is it okay for semi-trucks to take over a public street? Eighth Avenue provides critical access. 31st Street provides critical access to the Lincoln Tunnel. Eighth Avenue is also a critical link between the new Moynihan Station on the west side of the avenue and Penn Station on the east side. No other business in Midtown is allowed to take over surrounding public streets. Why should we allow your business to have such a negative impact on the neighborhoods and the city's largest street system?
As Bobby said, MSG does not take over the streets. Ninety times, 90 days a year, it does load-ins and load-outs. During those time periods, it, and those load-ins are for, not for the Knicks and Rangers. The Knicks and Rangers don't require all these trucks. It's only for special events such as concerts. And the average number of trucks for those concerts is about 10. Some of them have very few. If they have six or seven trucks, they can fit into the loading area, and there are no trucks on the street. So during certain, prior to certain events, there are some trucks on the street, but it is done in an extremely organized way. Bobby can explain in more detail with, you know, telephone connect, communication between Bobby's people and the trucks. So they only come in when they know there's a space for them, and they pull out in a very organized way. The other way, thing I would say is that 33rd Street has been under construction for the last year or so for the, by the MTA for the LIRR passageway. And MSG has modified its loading, so it really uses 33rd Street in a much less intensive way. And as you've heard, they've now, they've now proposed to no longer use 33rd Street for parking and staging of vehicles because there is a plan to, that DOT may wish to use 33rd Street as a shared street, and that's something that MSG would be happy to cooperate with in the future.
How many times a year do you obtain a special permit for these events?
Every time we have a concert, we obtain permits for staging if required. If a show is small enough to fit all the trucks within our confines, it's not necessary.
So how many times estimate, do you think, roughly? Because you did say about 90 times a year?
90 times load-ins and load-outs. I would say approximately 65 times we apply for permits.
65 times? Okay, one more question before I turn it to my colleagues. Given what we just discussed, what would be the goals and outcomes of the transportation management plan that CPC has to impose on you and that you have to now develop with DOT?
Yeah, as mentioned, we would conduct a study of available off-site parking locations for trucks in close proximity to the arena. And we've already began looking at those locations to find something that is available nearby and can facilitate our operational needs. We would work on restrictions on hours for commercial vehicular traffic. As is, we do try to park, load and unload trucks during off-peak hours where traffic is at a minimum. We would designate locations for security checks, and we would increase reliance on zero emissions vehicles.
Thank you. I would now like to allow my colleagues to ask your questions. We're going to start with Majority Leader Powers, followed by Councilmember Brewer, then Councilmember Bray. Majority Leader Powers?
Thank you. Thanks to the Chair. I have to run shortly, but I wanted to take an opportunity since my district is nearby and I'm a frequent user of both the Penn Station and the arena. What is a special permit for, that we're here for today? What is the purpose of the special permit?
Any special permit in the city of New York, the special permit uses are uses that are...
No, I'm saying, what is the special permit here that we're talking about?
Oh, it's a special permit for an arena in excess of 2,500 seats.
So if, without the special permit, MSG will exist as an arena that holds something like 2,500 people? Is that right to say?
It would be up to the owners of Madison Square Garden. They own the property. So they could use it as an arena for less than 2,500 seats. They could let it sit vacant. They can do whatever they want as the, as the owners of the property.
Right. And the, what would be the cost of, I think you guys cited a number earlier, but what is the cost of relocating if you wanted to move the Garden?
Yeah, according to the EDC, so this is an, ESD, sorry, this is an our number, it's theirs, it's approximately $8.5 billion.
Eight point five?
Of public monies, yeah, $8.5 billion.
Of public money?
Of public monies, yes.
Including, and then... Including, and then there might be private capital if, with, it depends on what the arrangement was, okay. And where are the current suggestions to move?
There is no specific location. And in fact, it would be quite challenging to move Madison Square Garden because if you, think about it, it's now between 7th and 8th, 31st and 33rd. So you need a two-block area and there aren't very many vacant two-block areas proximate to transit, which is an important requirement for the garden.
Yeah. How many people take the subway? I mean, what is the percentage of people that drive or-
Fifty to 60%.
Take the subway?
Take public transportation, yes.
And the others, drive, walk?
Drive, walk, ride their bicycles, whatever.
Okay. And what is that number relative to like MetLife Stadium?
I don't know. We can try to find out, but I imagine it's much higher.
It would be north of 90% if we're talking about MetLife. The overwhelming majority of folks that go there get their, yeah, get their car. Through the Chair, we can get you the exact percent.
And what is the, the last few special permits, what have been the lengths of those?
Of, for Madison Square Garden? The first one was for 50 years and the current one is 10 years.
Fifty?
Five, zero was the first one.
And then 10?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I defer to my colleague, Councilor Bacher, a lot. I will say on behalf of, I'm a Knicks fan, a Rangers fan, a subway rider and a Penn Station frequent user. I do think there is wisdom to having it close to transit, which is why Barclays is on top of every single transit line and the LRR there. And I think that folks who use the garden and, you know, I think appreciate the fact that they don't have to get into a car like they do other stadiums to be able to go use it. It is, takes you a day and a half to get to MetLife Stadium, that entire day. It takes you 30 minutes if you're from city hall to Penn Station, maybe even less than that. So I think there is a lot of wisdom in trying to keep it near public transportation. But I do, will say that I think a lot of the discussions here today about how to improve that area, which is desperately in need of both public ground improvements and safety improvements, it does feel like an obligation, responsibility of a major stakeholder there and that should certainly be part of the conversation. But I think if, as a lifelong suffering Knicks fan and a partial Rangers fan and frequent user of the garden, I think it's wise to have it near transit. And I think belongs where it is, but I do think there's a lot of work to be done to make sure that that area is well taken care of. So with that, I'll give it back to the Chair.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. I'm going to follow up as I did with city planning. I was here in 2013. I can't remember exactly what I voted for, I'll be honest with you, on this topic. But my question is, in the last 10 years, under your analysis, what was it that you were supposed to have done? Maybe you did it all. You seem to think that you had focused and done, but I want to know from you, number one. And then second, my second question of course is, I do go with Bob Yarrow, as he wrote in the New York Post, thinking that four years and then more if appropriate would be the way that I would suggest that this council goes. But first, of course, the 10 years, what have you accomplished? Or do you think that there wasn't anything to accomplish in that 10-year period that was necessary?
So I'll start by saying that I was here 10 years ago, as was Joel Fisher, and we were involved in the process at that time. First of all, in connection with the special permit, Madison Square Garden did take on certain improvements, including a repaving of the area. There was quite a bit of signage and wayfinding signage. And at the time, Madison Square Garden did propose some seeding and planting, but that was taken out at the city council. So in addition to that, there have been improvements that were made over the last 10 years and I'll turn it over to Joel to respond to that.
Well, I'm going to, I'll talk about one area and then I'll talk, turn it over to Bobby with regards to our loading. So in addition to what we were required to do, which we did every single thing that we were asked to do and required to do as part of the process and being granted the 10-year permit, we also put lighting on the building. Cost us a lot of money, over $10 million to put up this lighting, to beautify the area and to celebrate not only the events we have, but public events that take place or historic events that take place in the city. In addition to that, although not required or part of the city, the permit, we added a lot of loading improvements, which I'll turn over to Bobby to talk about specifically.
As examples over the last 10 years, since the last special permit, we've reconfigured our loading area, taking out a curb within our truck loading zone, allowing us to get an additional truck off the street and within the confines of our property. We've worked closely with Amtrak and Vornado to utilize the 31st Street exterior loading dock for unloading and loading and parking broadcast trucks, again with the goal in mind to take additional trucks off the street and within our property. We've scheduled timed vendor deliveries for accepting other goods and services like food and beverage, working around our event load-ins and prioritizing them in order to make it an efficient operation and cut down on vehicular traffic around the building. We've added additional union employees to our staffing calls with an emphasis on increased loaders and forklift drivers to speed up the operation while always maintaining safety. This allows for improved efficiency and moving trucks in and out of the neighborhood much quicker. We've added pedestrian traffic managers to all truck staging areas to assist with pedestrian traffic flow and added a fixed building security position within the taxiway for pedestrian safety between the mid-block Penn Station entrance and Two Penn. All of this is in addition to our existing loading best practices, which includes but not limited to scheduling load-ins and load-outs at off-peak hours, minimizing the impact on pedestrian vehicular traffic, allowing for quick loading and departures of trucks in and around MSG. For example, the majority of our load-outs happen overnight once a show concludes and activity is at a relative minimum around the venue. For every show, we work closely with the touring production team to minimize vehicular traffic and ensure pedestrian safety during our loading operations. All of that taken together, these practices ensure we continue to successfully load in and load out out of the world's most busy arena while minimizing our impacts and continuing to make safety and security of pedestrians our priority.
All right, well, thank you. I mean, I don't go to as many games as my colleagues, Councilmember Powers, but I will say, you know, despite all of this, the area needs a lot of improvements. I think you'd agree to that. So it does seem to me that the city council, and I'll speak for myself, didn't ask for enough. We just talked about repaving and wayfinding and perhaps you've done some other things along the way. I must admit, I think that, as you heard me say earlier, I think four years with more time, if it's appropriate, is where this council should go. Could you live with that?
No. So again-
You may have to, but you don't want to.
You asked the question.
Yes.
So, so again, we've asked for a long-term special permit and as I mentioned in my prepared remarks, it's in everyone's best interest since the mayor, the governor, the Manhattan Borough President. City planning have an expectation that MSG is not going anywhere and there's going to be an infusion of billions and billions of dollars to get the grand vision of Penn Station that most New Yorkers believe that we deserve. So therefore, it's, would not be logical to, for the MTA, for Amtrak, for New Jersey Transit, for the governor to put in seven-plus billion dollars and then, as you mentioned, in 10 years or a shorter period of time, a different city council body comes and says, ah, I think MSG needs to go, wasting obviously all these money. So certainty is in everyone's best interest, not just ours.
Okay, I mean, I hear you. I think that it's good to hold people accountable at the same time. And even though you feel like you have been accountable to the last 10 years, there's a difference of opinion on that, just so you know.
Well, respectfully, city planning said that the commitments we made 10 years ago-
Right. I'm going to check with Amanda Burden and see what she says.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, the current head of city planning believes that we met our obligations. And as Bobby, and I just want to make sure this didn't get lost, he went through a list of things that we did in the last decade to get trucks off the street and be more pedestrian-friendly that no one asked us to do, that we did on our own.
I appreciate it. We all do things we're not asked to do. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Councilmember Abreu?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to just reiterate Councilmember Bacher's point about tax exemptions. I do think it's actually a very relevant point because it means there are more resources for MSG to free up in order to secure a special permit through improvements. Is it fair to say that by having this property tax exemption, there's more resources you can free up to do the improvements that we're calling for?
Here's what it's fair to say. And as I mentioned in my previous remarks, MSG being here is $2 billion in economic impact to New York City. $2 billion. So the city leaders and the state leaders back in 1982 actually did a smart thing because they didn't want the Knicks and the Rangers to move to New Jersey like the Giants and the Jets or move to California like the Dodgers and the Giants. So had they not structured the arrangement to ensure that the then owners of Madison Square Garden did not pack up and leave, that $2 billion that the city now generates would not be there. So it was actually a smart move.
Yeah, and I'm not speaking about whether the investment was the right thing or not. It's more of, my narrow question is, because there is a property tax exemption, does that free up more resources in order for you to make improvements in order to secure the city's special permit?
Yeah, I'm not going to get into just the finances of it.
I think the answer is yes. And I would also like to mention that, you did mention different levels of government. The council does have the final say, right? And so I really encourage you to continue working with your local council member, Eric Bacher, and his constituents who are here. There are a lot of improvements, I'm sure, that will be subject to negotiations in the coming weeks. And I think the improvements are very necessary in order for there to be a viable permit here. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that this is clear. We have, I have personally, nothing but respect for Councilmember Bacher. He's fantastic. Does a lot of great things for us as well as the broader community. We will work with the community. We will work with the council member. We will work with the entirety of the council. As city planning made clear, we're a good partner, right? Maybe it came together at the end, but we made a number of commitments that city planning is, according to city planning, forget about us, is happy with. We want to partner with the council member and we suspect that, you know, we'll reach similar, a similar result.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Abreu. There being no more questions for this panel. Before excusing this panel, I would like to make clear that if MSG wants to continue being right in the middle of the busiest city in the nation and take advantage of its access to Penn Station, that MSG has to offset the very rail transportation and public realm challenges of bringing more than 20,000 people per event to its arena and the hundreds of trucks it events annual requires. MSG needs, excuse me, MSG needs to demonstrate to this committee its ability and willingness to address how it's affecting our city and the local community and Penn Station. There being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counselor, there any members of the public who wish to testify on the arena tax amendment or the Madison Square Garden special permit remotely or in person?
Chair, as I announced at the beginning, we'll take testimony jointly on the tax amendment and the special permit. We're going to start with the elected officials that are in the room. We're going to put you in panels. So if you are in the room and, you know, haven't filled out a speaker card, please do so so that we can put you in panels. There's quite a few of you online, so bear with me just for a second while I make a quick announcement for the testimony. So for members of the public, just again, know that you'll be called in panels of four or five. If you sign up, make sure that you stand by when you hear your name being called and prepared to speak when the Chair says that you may begin. Please also know that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if you're remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council website. We will now hear from the first panel, like I said, elected officials, and Chair Riley will mention the names of the first panel.
So, good afternoon again. The first panel, we will consist of Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine, State Senator Brad Holman, Assembly Member Tony Simone, and a community board member, Leila Law Gesico. Can we start first with Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine?
Thank you, Chair Riley. Hello, friends. Great to see every one of you. The view is very nice from here. You should try it sometime. Chair Riley, Councilmember Bacher, we are very fortunate to have leaders of your talent on this issue. Grateful for all you're doing. I believe that after half a century of angst and suffering at Penn Station, we at last have the chance to build a truly great rail hub there. I don't think this opportunity will last forever. I think we have a window to act right now. The special permit gives us leverage to ensure that MSG accommodates changes in rail operations there. And there are other factors that we can't count on in the future. We need strong federal partners to pull this off. We have President Biden. We have Leader Schumer for 18 months. We don't know whether they're going to be in those roles after that, as painful as that is to consider. I'm excited that the MTA is bringing Metro North service into Penn Station. If we don't get the renovation done by then, what's already an extremely complicated project will become even more complicated. So for these reasons, because I want this done now, I recommended a relatively short five-year renewal of MSG's special permit to ensure that they play ball with the railroads and make the accommodations that we need and that it happens now. Because under any scenario, we're going to need MSG to give access to some of the key spaces around the arena to do this right. And what does it mean to do it right? Well, for me, it should include a grand new entrance on 8th Avenue. The population on the west is growing and already the number of people entering the station from that direction would make it alone the fourth-largest rail hub in North America. To do that, to build a grand entrance there, you're going to have to demolish the theater. But that creates other opportunities, like removing pillars on the train platforms below, which are obstructing passengers right now and making space to add more stairways and elevators, et cetera. Removing the theater allows you to build a large underground garage to deal with the issue that you, Mr. Chair, were rightly on focusing, rightly focusing on, the fact that trucks are now spilling out into our public space on the streets. We want them underground and you can do that if you get rid of the theater. And then I'm very compelled by the idea of building a box around the arena so that we can have retail and other active uses along a new street wall. And something that's, I think, underappreciated with that is that you can take Amtrak operation spaces out of the heart of the station where they're preventing passenger flow and move it to the corners of the box. So you can have a totally open, full-width pedestrian concourse, which will be, bring major improvements for passengers. Very quickly, just to wrap up, to do any of this, we're going to need MSG to give up space, be it the taxiway or the theater. And yes, legally, they have to be compensated for that. I don't like the idea of putting any more money in MSG's pocket. To me, the way, the way to deal with that is not to block great transit upgrades, it's to cancel their tax exemption, which the IBO has calculated has already cost us almost a billion dollars. That is the way to deal with equity on a project like this. So in conclusion, let's go big and bold now. Let's not waste this opportunity. Let's finally build the great Penn Station New York City deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Borough President. State Senator Brad Holman?
Okay, we agree. That's okay.
Okay, no problem. Assembly Member Simone, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Thank you. Nice to see everyone, Eric, Lynn and Gayle. It's nice to be back in this chamber again. I'm Assembly Member Tony Simone from the 75th AD. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on Madison Square Garden's application for a special permit to continue operation at its current location. The following is just a portion of the full testimony submitted by myself jointly with State Senators Liz Krueger, my State Senator, also Brad Holman Segal. As members of the State Senate and the Assembly whose districts overlap the Penn District, we urge- we urge New York City to reject MSG's renewal application. I want to repeat that, reject MSG's renewal application. On June 2nd, 2023, the leadership of Amtrak, MTA, and New Jersey Transit concluded that the venue is incompatible with Penn Station, incompatible with Penn Station. The compatibility report issued by the transit agency states that MSG's existing configuration and property boundaries impose severe constraints on the station that impedes safe and efficient movement of passengers and restricts efforts to implement improvements. However, if New York City ultimately decides to issue a renewal of special permit, to Gail's comments, I'll one-up you, for a maximum of three years, if possible, to be contingent on MSG making all the concessions deemed necessary by all the rail agencies and city of New York to make the arena fully compatible with the plan redesign of Penn Station, because New York City deserves an amazing, fabulous Penn Station. Penn Station is the heart of New York City's transportation hub, as we all know, the busiest rail hub in the Western Hemisphere. The current location is straining under the effects of severe congestion on the rail platforms and transit corridors. Anyone who knows who's been on the size of 7th Avenue, it's a hellhole in there still. But improving by day, the low ceiling heights and limited airflow present a safety risk. Just to wrap up, it's essential, in our view, as public representatives, that Penn Station receive a redesign deserving as a world-class transit hub. We can only do that by having leverage with MSG. A new special permit must be contingent on MSG making itself fully compatible with Penn Station. That puts commuters and our constituents first, not MSG first. Our constituents and commuters first. Thank you.
Thank you, Assembly Member. Senator Brad Holman Siegel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good to see my council colleagues here today. I'm State Senator Brad Holman Siegel. I represent the west side of Manhattan, from Christopher Street running up to West 103rd, represent part of Penn Station, along with Senator Liz Krueger, and of course, my colleagues here at the Assembly and Borough President level. Look, just a couple of points. One is that it's imperative that we keep MSG on a short leash, on a short leash because we need, we, the civic good, needs MSG to cooperate with the MTA and Amtrak in rebuilding Penn Station. Now, you heard today that MSG is cooperating, but as far as I understand, there hasn't even been a meeting yet set up. So, in my mind, why would we grant them five years, 10 years, when we need their cooperation now? We need the shortest amount of time allocated for this special permit renewal to ensure that they are at the table and working with the MTA in rebuilding Penn Station, making certain that we have that taxiway, making certain that we have those entrances at either end of, of, of the station. And when somebody tells you who they are, believe them. The series of outrages that the Chair and CEO of Madison Square Garden Entertainment have foisted on the public are numerous. We know there is biometric surveillance. We know that the MSG hired a private investigator to tail a hardworking member of the state liquor authority. So, cooperation seems not to be a defining characteristic of the leadership, sadly, of MSG, all the more reason that the special permit needs to be short. We're not trying to run MSG out of business. They say they're not moving, we understand that, but we need their cooperation. We have, as the city has leverage, we need to ensure that it's used in a way for the public good. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Ms. Gesico, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley and members of the subcommittee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to express our firm stance regarding the issue of MSG and its impact to our community. Community Board Five has thoroughly examined the application and finds that MSG does not meet the findings of Article 74-43. Consistent with our position stated in, in 2013, we strongly believe that the preferred alternative to address the many issues surrounding Penn Station is for the arena to relocate. We reached this conclusion after a thorough examination of the application. CB Five held a total of four public hearings attended by a cumulative total of 500 people. The City Planning Commission's recommendation to issue a 10-year permit does not fit the pace of negotiation at and around Penn Station. It also ignores this year's safety concerns caused by MSG to users of Penn Station. The station currently does not meet the NFPA 130 requirement because of MSG's presence, and this is according to the compatibility report that was issued by the, the railroads. CB Five believes that the preferred alternative to solve the safety and compatibility issues is to relocate. At this juncture, CB Five strongly recommends restricting the length of the special permit to a three-year period. While we appreciate the effort of the Commission to create new accountability mechanisms, we are concerned that they may not deliver on their intended goals. Instead, a three-year term will create the necessary impetus to create cooperation opportunities with the railroads and encourage MSG to seriously consider relocation. We acknowledge that viable sites exist, especially within Community Board Five, and we are absolutely convinced of that, and we want to do everything to actually create these kinds of conversations. So, it's imperative that stakeholders engage in a genuine and collaborative effort to find suitable and permanent solution. In the interim, CB Five recommends several improvements. We emphasize the need for public realm improvements that go beyond what has been proposed. And in conclusion, I will really urge the City Council to not allow for a 10-year permit. We believe that three years is ample and necessary to continue the negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question before I turn over to Councilmember Botcher. First and foremost, thank you to my colleagues for participating in this hearing. It is very important that your community sees you advocating for them as well. For the entire panel, it seems like you guys are in opposition of renewing this permit for 10 years and wanting it shortened into three years due to the lack of trust that you have that MSG will actually comply with these commitments. Is that, safe to say, I'm correct with that statement?
Well, I would say, we just need to, you know, trust but verify, as was once said. And if you give them an inch, as we've seen, they will take a mile to ensure that they are at the table with Madison Square Garden and, and Amtrak and MTA. We need to have the leverage that, that the Borough President mentioned, the shortest amount of, of approval for this special permit, I think, would help ensure that.
I'll just add, Mr. Chair, as you well know, City Planning did something that I think is extremely important in their recommendation on the zoning text amendment, which is to insert the provision requiring MSG to come back when 30% of the designs for a new station are done, and confirm that their operation is consistent with reconstruction of the train hall. That's really important, and that, that is the kind of leverage that we need, and it's why this moment, when we have the special permit process, is one we cannot let go to waste.
Thank you. Just a quick statement, I just want to, I know MSG is still here. I think it's imperative that, you know, you, you contact each of these offices and have them a part of the process moving forward and update them moving forward as well, because it doesn't seem like there has been a lot of transparency with these elected officials here. Councilmember Botcher?
I just want to thank my colleagues for being here and for your partnership on this and so many issues. I would love to get your, your brief thoughts on the proposals we have seen from the, the MTA and from ASTM, who's going to be testifying today. What your, your thoughts are on, on those?
Sure, if I, if I may. Look, we have an amazing opportunity to make Penn Station the most beautiful transportation hub in the nation, and there have been great plans, and I don't think any of us have publicly endorsed one plan, but the ASTM plan is intriguing, the MTA plan is intriguing. It has to be a plan that the community benefits from, that it puts commuters first, lots of light. We've all had a lot of these meetings, we've heard from the advocates, no eminent domain affecting, taking, going after the residents, the residents should stay put. Throughrunning, we have to think big and bold. We're like the greatest city in the world. We should not take what they tell us is the cheaper way, or the easier way, or one plan is too expensive. How many times have you heard that, and then the plan that comes out is, has a million cost overruns and didn't deliver what they said? We need light, we need streetscape, we reduce, get the trucks off the street. We're all in agreement. I don't want to hear money as an excuse when we know in the end, having, as, as the Borough President said and Brad, an 8th Avenue entrance and a 7th Avenue entrance that serves our constituents, build it and they will come, and light, and where folks can sit, not just the privileged few, but everyone can want to go to that station and not have to change. Bureaucratic ego should not get in the way of making our, have the most efficient transportation hub in the country.
I'll, I'll just add that, first, Chair Riley, I will say that the team from MSG does reach out a lot with elected officials, and they, they are doing a very good job in communicating with us, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, and I have a lot of respect for them. I do think that there is something, I don't know how to describe it, maybe a parasitic relationship between MSG and the city of New York. They seem just to take and take and take. We're not just talking about the, the property tax exemption, which is totaling close to $1 billion at this point, but they are not cooperating at this juncture with the MTA, whether it be the ASTM plan or the MTA plan. We're going to need MSG at the table. We have the leverage to do that. So, no matter which plan you support, Councilmember Botcher, I think this is a moment defining our ability to ensure that we have the cooperation, and make no mistake about it, MSG benefits like no other business in the city, being on top of the busiest train hub in the Western Hemisphere, where most of its riders, most of its fans have a one-seat ride to the arena. That's extraordinary. They need to give back. We can talk about the property tax, but let's talk about the special permit and ensuring that they cooperate as these plans evolve, no matter which one, at the end of the day, we support.
Just, just very briefly to add, either of the plans I've seen would be a massive improvement on the terrible status quo at Penn Station. And I think ultimately, we need an RFP process, an open RFP process, that takes in proposals for a great master plan there. What I will say, I'll reiterate, that I think we got one shot to go big and bold now, and I don't know if it's going to be a decade or two or more until we have a chance like this again. And so, to me, I, I want to push. I want to push to make this as grand as it can be, and for me, that should include both great new entrances mid-block and also a great entrance on 8th Avenue and some of the other features that I mentioned.
Yeah, and if I can add very quickly, you know, I think it's really important to understand that the proposal by MTA and ASTM only addresses the concourse level, but the real problem, the real safety issue, is actually at the platform level. And the impediment of MSG onto Madison, of MSG onto Penn Station is really where, where the critical safety issue is, is really at the platform level. So, I think that, you know, both plans have merit, and, you know, some of the Community Board Five is, you know, very eager to work both with the MTA and ASTM to, you know, better understand and, and come to a, a plan, because we need to rebuild Penn Station. But it is really critical to understand the impact of Madison Square Garden on the platforms, which is why we recommend that Madison Square Garden relocates, because short of a relocation, the, the columns that support MSG are going to continue to be an impediment to improving Penn Station, especially as we believe that throughrunning, the ability for trains to come directly from New Jersey into Long Island or up to, to Westchester is a critical improvement. And, you know, when you think about Penn Station, you think about a building, but actually think about Penn Station as a process of moving people through the region, and continuing to, to use Penn Station as a terminal is a, a bad idea. We need to actually be able to increase connectivity, to increase capacity, to move more people faster through the region, and this is why it is really critical to understand why MSG is an impediment to the functionality of Penn Station and why the plan, whether it is ASTM or the, the MTA plan, needs to go beyond that and needs to address the platform issue.
We are going to hear today from the railroads and others who have said that MSG in and of itself is not an impediment to throughrunning. You've heard that also?
So, you know, I, I think that throughrunning needs to be fully evaluated. I don't know that it has ever been done really in, in a substantial, robust, and independent fashion. This is something that we've been calling, it is very, very critical to understand, you know, with this component of, you know, the, the transit operations, it, it involves the region, you know? It's not a New York-centric issue, and, you know, I mean, we play a very critical role, obviously, but, you know, it will have benefits, benefits, you know, plus for the entire region. So, this is really critical, and, you know, from what we are hearing from independent experts, the, the columns from MSG and from to Penn, you know, there are two major buildings on, on this super block, are actually the cause of, you know, a number of constraints at the platform and operational level.
Will those independent experts be testifying to that today?
I believe so, yes.
Who are they?
They would be engineers from Rethink New York.
And they'll be testifying to that today? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. There being no more questions for this panel, this panel is not excused. The next panel we'll call up will be Ken Fisher, Adam Graves, and Steve Schirero. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't call Alexandra's name.
Can you turn on the mic?
Can you turn on the mic real quick? Can you turn on the mic real quick?
Ken Fisher had to leave, so I was going to read a statement on his behalf, if that's okay?
This is Ken Fisher's statement?
Yes, he was reading on behalf of Alexandros.
Does she have to, can she fill out a speaker's card, please?
Yeah, happy to fill out a form.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, while we do that, Steve, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Steve Shrip. I'm here, and I'm proud to be here to talk about one of my favorite places on earth, Madison Square Garden, the world's most famous arena. I am here to urge you to please renew MSG's operating permit in perpetuity, forever, not three years, not five years, not 10 years, okay? I think a fully operating garden doesn't just benefit the fans, it does so much to support businesses in the area, delivers more than $2 billion for the city and state annually. That's real money, money that would vanish without a fully operating MSG. Madison Square Garden is in the heart of the city. It belongs in the heart of the city because it is the heart of the city. People come to Madison Square Garden from all over the world, in as much a landmark as any other building or any other landmark in the city. Every kid's dream, every mu- Every kid's dream, every musician, every athlete is to go to Madison Square Garden, to play at Madison Square Garden. No one says my dream is to play the National Coliseum. Madison Square Garden, even myself, 100 pounds ago, I played at Brooklyn College. December 9th, 1978, I played at Madison Square Garden. That day is etched in my mind 45 years later. I am lucky to know firsthand about the wonderful work the garden does. It's not just a building. It's not just a business. Garden has done, it's raised money for undeserved children all around the region through the Garden of Dreams Foundation, which I serve on the advisory board. And if you haven't seen the talent show at Radio City, I'm telling you, you're missing something. Since 2013, I've also been the proud host of Garden of Life, an All-Star comedy benefit, three times. We've raised more than $7 million for kids in need. And it shows the power of Madison Square Garden and the impact it can have, not just our fans, but our kids who need a helping hand. So let's not limit the garden's ability to operate at full potential. The garden is one of our city's most important businesses. It's an iconic venue for the city all over the world. It does so much for our communities. It should stay right where it is forever. I'm from Brooklyn. I grew up here. Not everyone talking has. I know what the garden means to this city. I urge you to approve the garden's operating permit in perpetuity. I thank you very, very, very much. And if you do, I'll owe you a favor.
Thank you, Steve. Adam, you may begin.
Thank you very much for having me here. My name's Adam Graves, and I was fortunate enough to have the privilege of skating on garden ice for a decade. And I will tell you, growing up in Canada, and you talk about New York, and whether it's friends or family, they talk about Madison Square Garden. And the dream of, as Steve said, every athlete performer, you think of the incredible events and things that have taken place at that building in, not just in sport, whether it's the Knicks or the Rangers or concerts, but also, as you know, conventions, events to support things that the entire country are going through. And when you think about the privilege of being on that ice and what it means to the fans and the families. And I talked to generations of Ranger fans, from kids to their parents to their grandparents, where they have memories of, through the years, from their experiences. And when you talk about the positioning of it and taking the subway or walking to the garden and what that means to these families and these people. And again, Garden of Dreams is a perfect example of that. It started in 2006. We have 30 partner charitable organizations, 400,000 kids. And it's not just a one-off. This is multiple interactions where the kids come down and experience something that they'll never forget. The garden creates these capsules that stay with people their entire lives. It is a special place, a place that even as a Canadian, I consider home and my home, and the garden home is right where it sits right now. And that's where I'd like to see it.
Thank you, Adam, right on time. All right, Marva Avington, you may go. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Marva Avington. I'm reading a statement on behalf of Alexandros Washburn, who is out of the country. Chair Riley, members of the council, my name is Alexandros Washburn, and I am testifying on behalf of the Grand Penn Community Alliance, a group which advocates for great public architecture and great civic spaces. Its supporters have no financial stake in this. If the council grants a full 10-year extension of the special permit, the opportunity for either will be lost. 10 years ago, the council modified the special permit approved by the City Planning Commission from 10 to 15, from 15 to 10 years. Promises were made to the council and the public that there would be improvements to the streetscape. They were never kept because 10 years was enough time for most to forget they ever were made. This time, we are told it will be different, but we, you, won't know until it does, if it does. And we, you, won't be able to do anything about it either way. In the meantime, the garden will get the benefit of being able to operate, just as it always has. This is a body the charter intends to keep agencies and applicants accountable. This application is happening against a backdrop of challenge and change. After the Cuomo Plan for Penn Station collapsed, new ideas emerged. One was from the rail agencies that use Penn, which told us that MSG on top creates safety hazards that must be addressed, not just promised. Another was for a new 8th Avenue train hall and disguising the garden, perhaps better than what's there now, but doing little for the immediate area except creating a new train mall. Then there are the ideas, like ours, which don't accept the premise that the garden can never move, as it has three times before. Imagine a modern Madison Square Garden just nearby, an arena to be proud of, the arena New York deserves, an opportunity for transformational development of a mixed-use equitable neighborhood, an opportunity for open space the size of Bryant Park. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to build a great new train station and public space for New Yorkers and those who visit. Why throw it away? We implore the City Council to limit the special permit to a three- to four-year term at the most. A 10-year permit will silence the exciting conversations that are occurring right now, and the transformative visions and ideas now being conceived will be stillborn. Let MSG come back to prove to this council that it will live up to its obligations. At the same time, create some breathing room allowing for exciting new plans to be conceived, fine-tuned, and debated. The passionate discussions occurring now around Penn Station and Madison Square Garden could yield one of the great public works of our time. Why cut them off? One last note, to those who say it's too complicated or too expensive or takes too much will to overcome the powerful economic interest, you need go no further than the high line to see a civic vision that with public support unleashed transformation. Why? Because this council leaned its weight to the idea. Your leadership made a difference then, and it can make a difference now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have questions for this panel? No questions, this panel is excused. Thank you for your testimony. I would now like to call up James Torres Springer, excuse me, Jamie Torres Springer, Peter Matuszewicz, sorry if I mispronounced your name, Sarah Appleton, Jeannie Kwan, Ryan Morrison, and Jack Robbins. I probably messed up a lot of your names. I'm so sorry. Please excuse me. Okay, so we're going to begin with Jack Robbins. Jack, you may begin.
Thank you, thank you, good afternoon, Chair. I think our--
Well, actually--
Amtrak are going to start--
You guys want to--
We sat ourselves in order--
All right, so what we'll do is, you'll start how you want to. Just reinstate your name and organization for the record, all right?
And just, I know it's like tight, the setup, but if you guys can all, whoever's speaking, just speak into the mic so that we can pick you up.
Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair and councilmembers. My name is Jeannie Kwan, and I'm the Vice President for Major Stations Capital Program Delivery at Amtrak. And thank you for the opportunity to speak today. So as the owner of Penn Station and the northeast quarter rail infrastructure that runs through it, Amtrak recognizes that Penn Station isn't merely a station. It is the gateway to New York City, serving an estimated 600,000 passengers daily before the pandemic, making it busier than all three New York airports combined. The station is a testament to the city's interconnectedness and serves as a key transit point for individuals traveling locally, regionally, and nationally, playing a critical part in our economy, infrastructure, and communities. Amtrak's rebound from the pandemic has been robust, and we are now carrying more riders through Penn Station than before the pandemic crisis. So the modernization expansion of Penn Station, it is a priority for Amtrak. And coupled with investments like the Gateway Program, this initiative will ensure that our rail network can support our region's population growth and economic prosperity in decades to come, which is why we are collaborating with our railroad partners on a vision to modernize and expand Penn Station that will integrate Moynihan Train Hall and a future Penn expansion into a unified world-class complex that provides safe and reliable transportation service. Achieving this vision will necessitate close collaboration with our neighbor Madison Square Garden, given the arena's location and intricate and complex structure. While it is the city's purview to make decisions concerning the garden's special permit, we are appreciative of the mechanism for collaboration proposed by the City Planning Commission, especially now that we are on a path forward to reach 30% design in the next 12 months. Our relationship with Madison Square Garden has been nurtured over many years of close collaboration. We value our relationship with them, and we look forward to the continued partnership. So I'll now turn it over to my colleague Sarah Appleton to elaborate on our priorities and desired collaboration with MSG.
Thank you, Jeannie. Thank you to the Chair and members of the Subcommittee for the opportunity to speak today. Sarah Appleton with Amtrak, and Assistant Director in our Major Stations Capital Delivery Program. Over the past three years, Amtrak and our railroad partners have developed a conceptual master plan to serve as the starting point for the station's reconstruction. Our master plan work identified priorities for that reconstruction, including expanding public circulation space to relieve overcrowding and improve passenger comfort and security, simplifying the station's layout to relieve overcrowding as well and place it on a single public level with more intuitive wavebinding for our passengers and the public at large, improving station and platform accessibility in egress, modernizing operational spaces and systems to enhance safety and efficiency, and enhancing the station's presence and entrances at street level. We're committed to creating a unified station complex and creating spacious, prominent new train halls at street level wherever possible, looking at the station holistically from 7th Avenue to 8th Avenue and across 8th Avenue to Moynihan Train Hall. Our railroads are now collectively beginning what we refer to as our preliminary engineering process, where we will update and refine our master plan concept based on more extensive engineering, public input, and environmental review work. During this process, we'll be open to all ideas that advance our priorities for the station, as Governor Hochul recently emphasized. And we'll be looking to partner with Madison Square Garden, particularly to improve the station's prominence at street level along 8th Avenue and in the mid-block zone to upgrade loading facilities and practices, relocate structural elements and equipment where necessary, and explore financial partnership, where investment can provide mutual benefit to our organizations and our customers. We greatly appreciate Governor Hochul's commitment to advancing this important project, and we're looking forward to collaborating with the MTA, New Jersey Transit, the city, our community stakeholders, and the garden to create a 21st century station that's worthy of New York City and our broader region. And we'll be happy to answer any additional questions during Q and A session.
Good afternoon. I'm Peter Matuszewicz, MTA Senior Vice President and Project Executive for Penn Station Reconstruction. I'm just adding some more detail regarding the plan for Penn Reconstruction that the railroads have spent the last few years developing. As Sarah said, we plan to simplify and open up the station's layout to significantly improve safety, circulation, and navigation, and reduce crowding. The plan would transform the station by shifting all public circulation, boarding, and public-facing services to the lower level and doubling ceiling heights in all of the public concourses. One centerpiece of this approach is a new train hall on the east side of the station. A new expanded east concourse below the former MSG taxiway would be complemented at street level by a new atrium and skylight with the new station entrances at 33rd and 31st Streets that would significantly improve safety in the event of an evacuation. On 8th Avenue, the master plan envisions expanding the station entrances into the underutilized corner plazas, increasing accessibility and visibility, and providing architectural features along 8th Avenue to enliven what is now a dead zone. We're advancing this plan on an aggressive schedule to complete preliminary design in one year, launch the environmental review process concurrently, and initiate early construction work by the end of next year, 2024. This allows us to do the most impactful track-level work before Metro North Penn Station Access brings Metro North New Haven Line trains into the station in 2027. Our plans have, and will continue to, consider the interaction of our work on our neighbor, Madison Square Garden. We're committed to making sure that any impact on MSG's operations is minimized during construction, just as we did successfully during the recent reconstruction of the Long Island Railroad 33rd Street concourse in the station. Where possible, the master plan proposes changes within the station's existing envelope. But given that MSG sits on top of Penn Station, many critical elements require changes to MSG's envelope at street level.
Thank you, Peter. Chair and councilmembers, Jamie Torres Springer, President, MTA Construction and Development. As my colleagues have explained, we have a real plan to transform Penn Station and an urgent deadline to do it now, and we need Madison Square Garden's cooperation to make it happen. As you consider whether or under what terms to grant MSG their special permit, I want to lay out what MSG needs to do to become compatible with Penn Station and the plans for its reconstruction, which is one of the permit's key findings. We are not asking MSG to move. That's up to the city. We want to work with it to address the constraints that its location creates. Even as our design will continue to progress over the next year, our plans today are sufficiently developed that we know what we need from MSG now to form the basis of an agreement. Let me say exactly what those things are. First, we're looking for a swap of property interest with MSG. It includes the former mid-block taxiway, which you've heard has been closed since 9/11, except for the portion that MSG uses for loading, and the corner plazas on 33rd and 31st Streets on 8th Avenue. MSG currently uses portions of these spaces for loading operations, which adversely impacts Penn Station and the surrounding public realm. Second, we can collaborate with MSG now, now, to develop a relocation plan for certain equipment that we know today must be moved to facilitate Penn Reconstruction, like HVAC C Systems and a Con Ed Vault that is in the railroad space. Third, we believe MSG should contribute toward the cost of aspects of the project that benefited, like improvements to its loading and entrances. To be clear, any financial contribution we would be seeking from MSG would be proportionate only to the benefits it would receive from new shared infrastructure, not the larger public benefit. And finally, we need MSG to allow the railroads access to undertake specific elements of construction on its property, like necessary structural work. For MSG to become compatible, we need to enter into an agreement as outlined. We appreciate that City Planning Commission proposed a mechanism for this collaboration once we reached 30% design. But again, our plan is advanced enough to come to an agreement with MSG now. Only an agreement will enable us to meet our timeline and complete critical work before Metro North Penn Access customers arrive to the station from the Bronx in 2027. We look forward to MSG coming to the table with the railroads and ask the council not extend the permit unless we come back with an agreement that paves the way for a modern Penn Station worthy of New York City. Thank you very much. That's it for our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a few questions before I turn it over to Councilmember Botcher. Can you help me better understand the timeline for the proposed reconstruction of Penn Station in relation to the anticipated Metro North Access in 2027?
Sure, I'll cover that, Chair. Thank you for the question, because it is a really important milestone for us. Peter mentioned, we've initiated the design phase, which is led by the firm that we've competitively procured, represented by Jack Robbins here. We expect to compete, complete preliminary design in the third quarter of 2024. At the same time, we expect to initiate environmental and historic review processes later this year to run concurrent with the design phase, and we expect to complete it in mid-2025. We plan to initiate early construction activities. An example is relocating utility infrastructure, but we're early on in the design process to know exactly how we package things, by the end of next year, and begin construction in earnest in early 2026. This aggressive schedule will help us take advantage of a window of operational flexibility due to, as you noted, Chair, decreased train traffic now that East Side Access has diverted some Long Island Railroad trains to Grand Central. And before the Metro North Penn Station Access Project initiates Metro North New Haven Line Station into Penn Station in 2026-- Access project initiates Metro North New Haven Line Station into Penn Station in 2027. So that's, we're working very hard, and are all aligned as railroads, to try to get design advanced, environmental review advanced, so that we can start work and get particularly the disruptive work that requires outages. That's really the currency of the capital agency that I run, is we just, you know, every outage is precious, and so we can get more track outages to get work done between now and 2027. That's why it's critical that we get going now and we get this plan together and designed.
Thank you. Can you speak on the importance of combining the foundation and platform work for the reconstruction of Penn Station with the work needed to complete the Metro North?
Sure. Actually, Peter, would you like to comment on that?
The idea is to get that platform and foundation work done before 2027, when Metro North will arrive at Penn Station. So it's the most disruptive work that we need to do, because we need track outages, we need to change service in the station while we do that work.
What will be the consequences of not doing the work at the same time?
We can still get it done, at the cost of it taking longer, of more service changes, and somewhat greater cost. Can still be done, but we're looking to do this as efficiently as possible, so we want to get that work done before Metro North arrives.
What will the MTA know, excuse me, when will the MTA know what foundation and platform work is needed to complete the reconstruction of Penn Station?
Over the course of the next 12 months, as we complete preliminary design.
12 months, okay. What, if anything, about the current stadium use inhibits your ability to accomplish this timeline?
To accomplish the timeline? Do you want me to?
Sure, please.
Okay. The stadium uses are, do not have that great an impact on our timeline. They have an impact on what we want to do. So we can get it all done in a reasonable timeframe if we reach agreements with Madison Square Garden. This includes the property interests in the taxiway and on Eighth Avenue, relocating their Con Ed Vault, and negotiating easements through their property for things like air conditioning ducts and electrical conduits. So the timeline is dependent on those agreements, not on their operations.
The agreements with MSG?
That's correct.
How are MSG's present loading activities impacting station users trying to access Penn Station and separately Moynihan Hall?
Right. So thank you for that question. Just sort of allow me to back up a little bit and talk about the problem that we're trying to solve. Today, there's a lack of adequate circulation and egress space from Penn Station in the event of a fire or another emergency, in addition to the impact that it has on the comfort of passengers. Solving this problem requires much larger exits and train halls. The station needs properly sized and more visible train halls and entrances in the mid-block and on Eighth Avenue, befitting of the place of civic importance that it is, and able to accommodate the station's growing ridership. The railroads plan repurposed these underused and lackluster spaces for such train halls and entrances. So to your point, Chair, what is the issue with MSG's compatibility? Their loading operations in and around the taxiway and at Eighth Avenue and 31st Streets are incompatible with the railroads' plan for Penn Station Reconstruction. In any plan for improvement of Penn Station, the taxiway is needed for a mid-block train hall, as Peter described. MSG currently uses portions of the taxiway for its loading operations, because their loading entrances don't have sufficient clearance to accommodate the large trucks that bring equipment to the arena. As a result, loading takes place on the taxiway and other unenclosed areas on MSG's property with a small army of forklifts bringing the materials into the arena. This arrangement is not authorized by MSG's 1963 or 2013 special permits. It detracts from the public realm and is not compatible with the plans for the urgently needed reconstruction of Penn Station. Similarly, MSG uses the corner of Eighth Avenue and 31st Street, which is intended as a pedestrian amenity, for loading operations for the theater at MSG. Trucks back up onto the street and through the plaza to load through a door to the theater adjacent to the plaza. Needless to say, this interferes with pedestrian access to the station entrance at Eighth Avenue and 31st Street and block station visibility. So our plan is to reposition those spaces as significant train halls that provide for both passenger comfort, circulation, egress, and particularly addressing safety issues in the event of an emergency, and that is the primary incompatibility we see with MSG. Our master plan envisions these loading operations that we described would be moved inside new or reconstructed loading facilities. It, by the way, wouldn't require a change in the elevation of the bridge that was described by MSG's engineers. That's not true, to create the mid-block train hall, and that would actually increase the number of trucks that can be accommodated off the street, and of course, as I mentioned, would only be a cost to MSG in relation to the benefit that it receives. So that's the major incompatibility, is related to loading and the use of these underutilized public areas. There are other incompatibilities that Peter described, equipment that we need to move, you know, work that we need to do in the station and elsewhere. Those are the fundamentals that would enable us to make the arena compatible with the station.
So it doesn't, so with what you just stated, Jamie, is the current loading plan that MSG is proposing compatible with the master plan for the reconstruction of Penn Station?
You know, I think as the council members seem to have pointed out in earlier testimony, I'm not aware that there's a real loading plan that's been proposed. I'm aware there's a discussion of a traffic management plan, and, you know, it sounds like there's some commitments being made to not illegally load off of 33rd Street, which is something that MSG does now and they acknowledge doing, but the, you know, the sort of primary loading takes place at the edges of the taxiway and at the Eighth Avenue and 31st Street Public Plaza corner. I'm not aware of any plan that's been proposed by the applicant to mitigate those circumstances. And again, our plan is to, in fact, all plans we've seen would mitigate those circumstances by providing a new reconstructed indoor loading area at the edge of the future mid-block taxiway, the future mid-block train hall, excuse me.
If I might just supplement that for a minute.
Sure.
I mean, you know, I think we defer to the city ultimately in its assessment, you know, whether the findings have been met, and certainly echo Jamie's comment that we haven't seen the specifics of a new loading plan, but understand that there would be a TMP pursued. We do want to acknowledge that, you know, we're aware that their loading situation is challenging. We appreciate that, but the unfortunate reality of the situation is that, you know, the truck movements are interfering with passenger access. It's a frequent complaint here from members of the community and our customers. Impedes wayfinding, navigation, access, creates dangerous movements around trucks, both along Eighth Avenue and in the taxiway area, and particularly, you know, now Eighth Avenue is a particular challenge, as I believe, you know, one of the members of this Subcommittee already highlighted, with the addition of Moynihan Train Hall. Crossing Eighth Avenue is a really important connection for our customers and important to us as a priority to improve that situation, to make sure that the station functions as a single unified complex in the future. So I just, you know, want to highlight those, some of those unfortunate circumstances that, again, we're looking to rectify, but are existing conditions today.
Does the station along Eighth Avenue impair access to the new station on the west side?
To Moynihan Train Hall?
Would you mind clarifying? Are you referring to Moynihan Train Hall?
Correct.
I think what you're asking is a little bit of what I just alluded to, where yes, truck movements are a challenge right around Eighth Avenue. Those crosswalks on 31st Street and 33rd Street are a major way station users and members of the public are transiting between the east and west sides of the station, and again, kind of impede us being able to enhance the, you know, connectivity of the complex and unification of it across, you know, our beautiful new train hall, Moynihan.
Thank you. On any given day, could you just discuss how many riders come through Penn Station, and what peak hours do you see increased ridership?
Sure. So we, the pre-COVID total number is 600,000 passengers per day. You know, we likely have seen some diminishment of that at this point because of ridership, although it's bouncing back. We remain confident in projections that have, by 2038, if not significantly earlier, 683,000 daily passengers. A couple of things about those passenger flows, as was described earlier, roughly 70% of those passengers come in through the east side of the station, either through the Herald Square subway lines, or the Seventh Avenue, the 1, 2, and 3, versus 30% on Eighth Avenue. And the vast majority are Long Island Railroad and New Jersey Transit riders, with additional riders from Amtrak. So that's why our goal sitting here is to make, you know, and it's been the governor's goal and direction to us, to make these improvements as quickly as we can for those that significant number of riders, I mean, the busiest rail station in North America.
The peak hours, you see increased ridership?
Certainly in the peaks, yeah. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah. In the future, we're anticipating that the peak hour ridership will grow by 85% overall. Now, understand that the increase in ridership is what's driving the railroads to consider expanding the station. The peak hours is what you design for, right? So for instance, globally, right now, about 60,000 riders in the peak hour. In the future, that's going to roughly double to about 120,000 in the peak hour in the morning.
May I just add to that, Chair, from the Amtrak view?
Yes, please.
So Amtrak has seen an increase in our ridership, which is the intercity passenger ridership at Penn Station. Totally agree with Jamie here that, you know, we are planning for the future, and we will see greater numbers of ridership there. Also, just in terms of that breakdown of utilization of the station in terms of the location, Eighth Avenue is extremely important to us. We care a lot about Eighth Avenue. We've heard from a number of the community members on Eighth Avenue that that is important. So we do remain focused on looking at Eighth Avenue particularly in terms of the connectivity and treating the complex as a complete whole and the connectivity with Moynihan Train Station. So just wanted to add that as well, despite the fact that the numbers are smaller proportionally, but I think it was, President Levine earlier had said that if you take the numbers just at Eighth Avenue, you basically get the fourth largest train station in the country, so.
And when are the peak hours, just for the record? What time would that be?
The peak is actually two hours long. The, what was called the peak of the peak is fairly standard. It's about 7:45 to 8:45.
AM or PM?
In the morning, it's about 7:45 to 8:45, and then the shoulder, shoulder 30 minutes on either side are not quite as crowded, but they're quite crowded. So we tend to think of it as that entire two-hour window. In the afternoon, the evening, it's roughly 4:45 to 5:45, and again, 30-minute shoulder hour on each side.
Thank you. Two more questions before I pass to the Councilmember Botch. What about the entrances on Eighth Avenue? And you guys probably answered this, but I just want to ask it again for the record. What about the entrances on Eighth Avenue connecting the arena to Penn Station? Are they adequate? If not, what needs to be done to make them more compatible with the stadium use?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. So I want to emphasize a couple of things. First, as we've said, we're at master plan stage. We've agreed collectively that we're continuing to evaluate all options. The key in the master plan at the moment is, and this will, you know, endure no matter what, is that those entrances at 31st and 33rd Street are where the significant flows of pedestrians come in, and we have what amounts to 16,000 square feet of new train halls in the reconstruction of those two entrances. We cannot do that today without the cooperation of MSG for two reasons. One, they load the Hulu Theater at the corner of 31st Street and Eighth Avenue in the public plaza that needs to become that grand new entrance that I described. And second, MSG owns the area, those public plaza areas. So what we've proposed is an exchange of property interest that would enable us to create public access, that would still be public access for MSG, as well as the train station. We would simply improve it on behalf of the public.
Based on what you just said, can you summarize for me what activities and infrastructure associated with the use of MSG's property as an arena is not compatible with the proposed reconstruction of Penn Station based on the master plan MTA has completed?
As I described in my testimony, the presence of MSG's activities within the taxiway that is to become the mid-block train hall, and their activities within these properties on the Eighth Avenue side, the plazas on the Eighth Avenue side, is an incompatibility because it prevents us from improving the station to create public circulation, safety, egress, and so on. There are a set of, you know, and it's sort of technical, but there's a set of technical assets. For example, there's a Con Ed Vault that supplies MSG with power that is in the railroads' property, so it needs to move into MSG's property. There are a series of other improvements that we need to make, things like work on columns that, you know, we simply need agreement to do, but without those, and then, of course, as I say, you know, the big thing is loading, so that, you know, by moving the loading from its current location, we're able to create an enclosed loading area, which allows us to convert the mid-block area into a significant passenger hall, and we would need to do that work and would need that work to be done in concert with MSG. And again, as I've said, what we've suggested is that we share those costs, given that there are benefits to MSG involved in that work.
Thank you. Councilmember Botch?
I'd ask Amtrak specifically about the anticipated gateway tunnels and how that will affect the capacity issues of the current station. And I think, I believe that there's a need to help everyone understand the relationship between this new capacity need that's here and that's coming, and the reconstruction of the station and as it relates to Madison Square Garden. So for Amtrak, you are about to begin a process in which you decide how that capacity increase is going to be achieved, and you're going to evaluate different options, such as through-running, the Penn South expansion that's been floated, the Northern expansion. You're going to look at these options. Can you walk the community through how that process is going to work, how that, what kind of community outreach you're going to be doing, when it's going to happen, when the decision's going to be made?
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll start off by saying we absolutely agree with you, and we are happy to do that with you and the community in greater detail also outside of this hearing as well. But in terms of the additional capacity that you speak of related to the gateway improvements as part of the Hudson Tunnel project, that is the project of Penn Expansion, right? And Amtrak is overseeing the preliminary engineering for Penn Expansion currently with our partners at New Jersey Transit and also the MTA. So where we are right now in doing so is we're looking at developing and also refining what the track alignment would look like before we enter into that National Environmental Policy Act process, you know, that is run by the federal government that you speak of. And in doing so, as you've said, it is important to not prejudice the outcome and to look at all of the various options that there are. And in doing so, there is a robust public engagement that needs to happen as part of the process, which we will be following. Sarah, would you like to add to that?
Sure, I'll add a couple more details, as I know there's a lot of kind of questions and there's a lot happening in the district. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to clarify a few things. I just want to reiterate what Jeanne said about our very strong commitment to engaging with the public on both of these projects, both the reconstruction and the expansion. We are going to be convening an advisory group within the community, our three railroads, and there will be more to come on that in the near future. And we understand that there are a lot of questions as it relates to how you can achieve an expansion of service capacity, and there are questions from some community members about the concept of through-running and is that a feasible alternative? and is that, is that a feasible alternative in order to get us the capacity that will be possible once we construct a new tunnel? Since even if we construct the new tunnel, we need a place to put all the additional trains in Manhattan. And right now, the current station and its current footprint and its current configuration cannot accommodate additional train movements that will be unlocked. And so, you know, we have heard those questions from the community, so we are studying with the MTA, New Jersey Transit, the concept of through-running very thoroughly and evaluating its feasibility as one of the options that we would look at through that environmental review process. We are planning to share much more information with the community on that very soon. But I know a part of the question that you asked here was around how, if at all, does any of this relate to Madison Square Garden? The main, you know, interfaces we need with the garden really relate to the reconstruction project. There's been some questions about Madison Square Garden column removal at the platform level and what does that or does that not do for the station? So, I just want to clarify, you know, there are more than 1,000 columns that drop onto Penn Station platforms. Some do support Madison Square Garden, some support the Two Penn Building, some support the Farley Post Office, some support Moynihan. So, it's a very kind of complicated underground environment. If, in some world, MSG did move, there would, might be an opportunity to remove some of their supportive columns, you would still have other columns that would remain on the platforms. And in order to achieve through-running, one of the challenges and things we have studied is that you would still need to widen the platforms. So, even if you remove columns, you know, the platforms don't automatically become wider in order to accommodate the simultaneous boarding and alighting of passengers, which is important for doing an all-through-running operation. So, I said a lot, it's very complicated. I think we're looking forward to getting into this more and are happy to, to have further dialogue on this topic.
So, to, to achieve through-running, Amtrak's position is that the platforms would need to be wider than they are now?
That is our belief shared with the MTA and New Jersey Transit, yes, for safety reasons.
And conceivably, either now or in the future, if the columns were, if the, if the platforms were widened as needed, the, the columns being there would still permit through-running?
This is something we'd have to, like, look at more specifically if we knew the exact number of columns and their placement and make a determination. But certainly, one of the kind of biggest challenges that would require a change would be just the width. You know, we're not, it's not, unfortunately, a silver bullet to remove the columns. And when you get into talking about widening platforms, that means you have to take platforms out of service, you have to take trains out of service, which has disruptions for travelers up and down the northeast corridor. So, it's a, it's a very serious, you know, change that we've been studying in a lot of detail because we know it is a topic of interest to the community.
There's a number of different plans that have been put forward. The, I've heard from the MTA today, we're going to be hearing from ASTM. I'd like to ask you, Amtrak, what your opinion is of these different proposals?
Thank you. Obviously, we are part of the team with, along with the MTA and New Jersey Transit in advancing the master plan into, you know, into a design and engineering study that will work for the reconstruction of Penn Station. So, in terms of the ASTM proposal, we have looked at it. We as an, we as an Amtrak, we have met with ASTM, we have seen it, we do like what we see so far. We're very intrigued, we would like to see more. It is an impressive team. We will look at it in conjunction with our partners when they are ready to share it. Anything else to add to that, Sarah?
No, and I think, you know, we just want to pledge, you know, in this audience that, you know, we have heard feedback on certain elements of at least the design that people find intriguing and our stakeholders find intriguing. And we are committed to being responsive to that feedback that we've heard, and we'll be actively working with our partners, you know, in collaboration altogether as three railroads to see if there are refinements to our concepts that may make sense and would incorporate the public feedback that we hear.
Yeah. Councilmember, if I may, even though you didn't direct the question at me, I just want, I want to agree with my colleagues, but add one thing, which is to make sure it's clear. It doesn't matter which plan we're talking about. We need the same things from MSG in order to become compatible with the future Penn Station. There's an additional proposal for a train hall at the mid-block on Eighth Avenue. Everyone knows what the MTA's opinion is about that and that as a use of public funds. But, you know, with our colleagues, we'll evaluate, we're open to other ideas. But, you know, that, we should not let that be a distraction. That, we need the same things from MSG. We need to come to an agreement. We should do that before the special permit is issued, so that the can doesn't get kicked down the road. And we know what those things are, and so I, you know, I just, I just want to caution against being distracted by sort of other drawings.
Which leads me into the questions I have for you. I think what a lot of folks in the community want to know is what comes next? What's the decision-making process after this special permit, which we're going to wrap up in the next month and a half? What plans are there for an RFP that can solicit all the best ideas for a redevelopment of Penn Station?
Yeah, thank you. So, we outlined earlier, we have a year of really intensive design to do. That takes us to what we generally refer to as 30% design. It's a significant milestone. And, you know, in the, I just want to be clear that in the course of doing that work, there is extensive community engagement and consultation. At the conclusion of that phase, or actually, prior to the conclusion of that phase, the railroads will be making some decisions about how to structure the delivery of the project. You know, we have a variety of delivery models available to us. Historically, there's been kind of the thing that everybody laments because it makes everything take forever and cost too much, that, you know, you fully design and then bid it out to the lowest bidder and build it. You know, it's hard to imagine we're going to do that. We have a lot of success with design-build. We have done AP3 as, you know, the MTA recently, so we'll be looking at delivery models. But the point is that at that stage, there will be a procurement for contractor. And the contractor has the opportunity to provide, you know, what's, some of we call ATCs, alternative technical concepts, alternative proposals for financing and for approaches. So, there's both a stage now, whereas, you know, Amtrak has emphasized, we're evaluating different alternatives. And then there's a stage as we get into construction of the project in which there are opportunities for alternatives. Again, I want to emphasize, none of that changes what we need from MSG. And none of that, you know, is to suggest that somehow the can ought to get kicked down the road. We ought to come to an agreement about what we're doing between MSG and the station now, and then all these other things will play themselves out.
With respect to the RFP, do you envision an RFP for a master developer or a contractor?
Those are effectively the same thing, but we will, we will be looking at that and making some decisions about that as the time goes by.
Thank you. The, there's been a lot of back and forth about Seventh Avenue versus Eighth Avenue. What percentages are you working from about what percentage of folks come, enter through Seventh Avenue versus enter through Eighth Avenue?
So, in the master plan, we created a set of projections based on future transportation patterns. And that's based on growth, sort of background growth, but growth also to the west of the station, such that we'll see 70% of passengers around the Seventh Avenue side, Seventh Avenue entrances at street level, and then coming from the Herald Square, BDFM, and the one, two, and three at Seventh Avenue. The other 30% entering Eighth Avenue at street level, really at 31st and 33rd Street is where the flows will come into, but, you know, at street level nonetheless, and then the ACE. And just also to break that down, it's about, Peter, 50/50 between street level entry versus subway. So, you can say, you know, in that case, for example, 15% are coming in at street level on Eighth Avenue. You know, where's the other 85% are coming from the subways, the Seventh Avenue, and the ACE?
In those numbers, do you factor in the passengers on Long Island Railroad who exit their trains and come up on the western side of the station?
Yes, we do. Yes.
And what about folks who are in the station before their train arrives? What's the average amount of time that folks spend in the station when they're waiting for their train? And what I'm getting at here is what you've been hearing about the desire for a grand train hall on Eighth Avenue in addition to a mid-block train hall. And in addition to people entering the station, you've got people who spend time in the station. They might enter from Seventh Avenue, but they've got an hour, or they've got half an hour. Where do we want them to be? What do we want them to, what would we want them to experience?
Sure. Let me just respond to that. About 6% of the users of Penn Station currently are Amtrak riders. Amtrak riders tend to arrive at the station quite early. And you, and they're mostly now boarding from Moynihan. And you can see how well Moynihan has been designed to accommodate people who arrive early and spend time there. It reminds you of, of an airport, for instance. The other 90-plus percent of the users of Penn Station are commuters. And commuters are pretty much dedicated to spending as little time in the station as possible. People time their arrival pretty exactly to when their train is going to arrive. Now, that doesn't mean they don't need amenities or places to wait, but they're typically in the station and waiting 10 minutes or less. And that's the overwhelming majority of the users of Penn Station. This has driven our design, like, big concourses, lots of entrances and exits. People want to get in and on their train, they want to get off the train and out as quickly as possible.
If I could add to Peter's facts and figures, which are, you know, generally correct, you know, of course, I think we just generally want to express appreciation for, I think, what you're getting at, which is, of course, we still want to be designing a place that can serve as a destination. I think we're happy with the feedback we have heard from members of the public that they're interested in going to Moynihan even just to get food, even if they're not traveling. And certainly, we would want a reconstruction of Penn to similarly create a really welcoming space that's well-connected to the public realm in the neighborhood, even if, you know, our passengers may at least today not be spending more than 15 minutes in the station. Maybe they'd want to come earlier and get food. So, I just want to express appreciation for, I think, what you're getting at.
And, and at, at the risk of beginning to annoy you, Councilmember, I am just going to say that we can have all those discussions, we're happy to have them, and we have had good discussions on this subject. It doesn't impact what we need from MSG. What we need from MSG is that the loading, you know, at, on the taxiway, adjacent to the taxiway, and on Eighth Avenue, that the other obstacles that are in our way to Penn reconstruction, that the swap of property interests, all that needs to be effectuated, no matter where we come down on this issue. And that is the opportunity that the council has at this moment.
I think, totally hear what you're saying. And I think what you're hearing is, you know, people are hungry for the opportunity to be part of what happens here. And, you know, this special permit for our community is that opportunity. And we're very anxious to know what that process, and we want to shape that process going forward so that we're part of the decision-making. I'm going to yield to my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Just a follow-up real quick. Just to be clear, are we seeking, are you guys seeking money for MSG, for your land or for both?
We're not seeking money for the railroad's land from MSG. What we've, what we've described today is a exchange of property interests. You know, we're aware that the property that is under discussion is disused today. It is, you know, either that or its future use does not in any way conflict with its current use, as in the Eighth Avenue entrances. You know, they would still be Eighth Avenue entrances. And then, we would be seeking a contribution from MSG, not for, you know, public benefits, God forbid, we should request that, but only for those things that are of benefits to MSG. For example, you know, obviously, having reconstructed indoor loading would be a significant benefit for them. Having reconstructed Eighth Avenue entrances would be a benefit for them. So, there's a few examples like that.
So, the infrastructure improvements are the only contributions that you're seeking from them? No monetary contributions?
And, and those contributions only in proportion to a benefit?
Okay.
For, for the garden.
Okay. Councilmember Scholman?
Thank you very much. Actually, Chair, you asked one of my questions, so I only have a couple. You had mentioned during the testimony, the timeline for a design process for new Penn Station. Can you share with us the cost of that design process?
We have a design contract that's been awarded. I, I can't say I have the number in my head, maybe we could get back to you with that.
Can you please, yeah, get back to us with that? And also, there was some testimony, I just want to clarify. So, if, I know about the, the issue about the land and all of that and the contribution. If the MTA has something in their designs that they think MSG will benefit from, but MSG is not asking for the benefit, does, do you expect them to contribute towards that a proportionate share?
Well, I think that's a complicated issue, Councilmember, and it comes back to whether MSG is compatible with the station. So, certainly, I think MSG would say, and has said today, we, you know, like to pull our semi-trucks up on Eighth Avenue, or, you know, up onto the, you know, the northern portion of the taxiway to unload them. We're very happy with that situation. It's great. However, that does not enable us to reconstruct Penn Station. So, once we make the decision to reconstruct Penn Station, then those improvements for loading are necessary. It happens they also are beneficial to MSG at the same time, so it's reasonable for them to make a contribution to that.
So, along the way, there'll be some kind of decision made as to what the benefits are and everything else, and what it is that you might be asking for moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scholman. There being no other questions, this panel is excused.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you for your time. The next panel that we're going to call up is ASTM, which will be Luke Brittle, Peter Sipano, and Vishen, I cannot pronounce his last name, excuse me.
What'd you say? Chakrabarti?
Vishen Chakrabarti. Thank you. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
When you, when you begin, just state your name or organization for the record.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. My name is Peter Cipriano, Senior Vice President at ASTM North America, a global developer of transportation infrastructure projects. In a former life, I worked at the United States Department of Transportation on rail infrastructure development and financing. We're pleased to testify today in support of Madison Square Garden's application, but it is vital that New Yorkers also get a new Penn Station. This is a moment of inflection and reinvention for our great city. Periodically, we endure immense challenges that require creative solutions, innovation, and at its core, change. and at its core, change. We have an enormous housing shortage. Our CBDs are facing existential crisis. We yearn for a more equitable city across the board, and the climate crisis looms in the background of it all. I, for one, do not envy the members of this committee and their responsibilities, but I do applaud you for taking them on. Today, we want to humbly offer you one small idea. While no one thing can solve for all of our challenges, perhaps one thing can spark hope and signal the start of something new in our city. I believe our team has created just such a thing in our proposal for a new Penn Station. We all know the things this city doesn't need more of: billionaire penthouses, empty cash havens for oligarchs, and exclusive spaces that cater to the super-rich while struggling New Yorkers shuffled by drawn drapes. New York has enough of those things. Our plan for Penn Station would make a step, however small, to correcting this imbalance and signal a civic gesture for a new age. We have many monuments to our past, but this would be one to our future. The famous quote goes that where one once entered Penn Station like a god, they now scurry like a rat. Our plan will correct this 60-year-old error and restore Penn Station to a place worthy of its deserving citizens. Our plan permits this with MSG in place and can be accomplished quickly. While we cannot present the entire plan today, we're happy to do so at the earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Vishan Chakrabarti, architect and longtime advocate for fixing Penn. After decades of advocacy, I am the most optimistic I have ever been about building a great Penn Station because I recently became ASTM's design architect. Our comprehensive plan is bold and achievable because it leaves MSG in place but does not preclude it from moving someday. It replaces MSG's theater with a civic gateway on 8th Avenue, creates a luminous mid-block train hall, and establishes a unified, single-level station with high ceilings, fewer columns, full disability access, and a generous public realm free of idling trucks. Our design, which includes substantial MSG contributions, is compatible with both the arena and expanded rail service. We serve everyone, including Penn South, NYCHA, and other residents who live west of 8th Avenue because we have a full-block approach, unlike the MTA scheme compared to which The New York Times said our plan is clearly superior. The special permit establishes a modest MSG public realm contribution, but provides no definite path to prove MSG's long-term compatibility with the train station when, if ever, a 30% design is done. Our design can be 30% complete within six months, which would allow the public to establish MSG-Penn Station compatibility with certainty. By contrast, the MTA seeks a multi-billion-dollar property and capital contribution from MSG through the special permit, which I believe to be an illegal use of the permit as a former DCP Manhattan Director. Absent these MSG contributions, the MTA plan is billions of dollars short and therefore cannot achieve a credible 30% design. Their plan is a path to litigation, stagnation, and an inability to ever hold, to ever assess MSG compatibility. We request a master developer RFP to be issued soon by an entity like ESDC akin to Moynihan with stakeholder representation from the railroads, the city, and the community. This is the only fair, transparent, and certain path to complete a 30% design, establish compatibility, and meet the findings and spirit of the special permit. Thank you.
I'm Luke Brittle, Director of Transportation for HOK. We're a global architecture and design firm currently celebrating our 50th year in New York. We designed the new LaGuardia Airport Terminal B, the largest P3 in aviation history, and our ASTM's collaborating design architects with power. The ASTM proposal is consistent and compatible with MSG's arena use and in dramatic fashion will bring what we all desire and agree on what Penn Station lacks: space, light and air, and enhanced safety. Recognizing that Penn Station is the nation's busiest regional hub with multiple transit modes, the ASTM proposal will seamlessly resolve the intersections and interconnections of these modes. Most crucially, the ASTM proposal will be executed with a phasing plan that allows the public to continue to use Penn Station facilities and enjoy MSG programming, much like our HOK developed the phasing to keep LaGuardia Airport in operation during construction. Integral to our proposal is a new truck loading plan that improves street safety and activates pedestrian spaces at one of the city's busiest superblocks by moving the trucks off the street, which is also made possible by removing the Hulu Theater. Our proposal will be fully ADA compliant and will improve platform egress times by 30%, thereby clearing all platforms in less than four minutes as required by the National Fire Protection Association's NFPA 130 standard. The reutilization of the area of the theater will enable ASTM to provide all essential elements of clear vision, high-quality experience, first-class public realm, distinctive architecture, operational excellence, and vibrant retail. These goals can only be accomplished by the removal of the MSG, of the theater at MSG and the retention of the mid-block MSG pedestrian bridge at Chase Square. The ASTM proposal also does not preclude through-running. We are not adding any additional complexities to carry out through-running, and this concept can be achieved with MSG remaining on site. We believe that a competitive master developer RFP is the best way forward for a new Penn Station. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions for this panel. Councilmember Bautcher, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I want to take a step back and Vishan, I want to ask you specifically about the concept of moving Madison Square Garden. And, you know, I can't help but note that, like, it's been like two hours and 45 minutes, three hours, and we haven't heard any, like, concrete plans or proposals to move MSG, which is why there's so much discussion of other proposals. But you, Vishan, were one of the originators of a plan to move MSG across 7th Avenue. And I remember reading years ago about the press that you really went public with this, and The New York Times wrote about it. And I'd like to know, why did you move from someone who was a chief proponent of moving Madison Square Garden to part of the team that would propose keeping MSG where it is?
Councilmember, thank you very much for the question. So there's actually, just for the record, I want to state that there are two aspects to my previous involvement with this. One is I ran the joint venture that proposed moving Madison Square Garden across 8th Avenue to the back of Moynihan Train Station back in 2008. That was much more than a discussion. I think, as Joel Fisher from The Garden stated earlier, we were deep, two years into drawings. The Spitzer administration collapsed, and then the economy collapsed, and that plan collapsed along with it. In 200--
Point number nine ruined it.
Yeah. No comment. In 2016 is when our firm did a pro bono plan with the Ford Foundation, actually, for the New York Times editorial board. And that's the plan that you're talking about that looked at reusing the Garden's superstructure as a new train station if the Garden were to move across 7th Avenue. So why the change of heart? So about three months ago, I met this gentleman in force of nature, Peter Cipriano, and I was invited to a meeting to see the ASTM concept that HOK and an extraordinary team had developed, including, as was referred to earlier, The Garden's consulting engineers who ASTM had separately contracted. And two things immediately became apparent to me. And this was, again, about three months ago. One was this team had done more due diligence on this site than I think has been done since McKim, Mead, and White. They had thoroughly investigated this idea of taking out the Hulu Theater, of the loading dock, of looking at, you know, through-running, taking columns off, taking the platforms to NFPA 130 in terms of meeting safety standards. No one had done that level of due diligence. This theater idea has been around for a long time, as I'm sure you're aware, but no one had ever done that level of due diligence. So that was extraordinarily impressive. The second thing that was clear to me was that this team looked at the Garden not as an adversary but as a collaborator. And therefore, the Garden was in conversation with them, and Amtrak had been in conversation with them. And for someone who's been around Penn Station for 20 years, you know that Amtrak and The Garden own this piece of property. And if they are not collaborating with you, you are not going to get anywhere other than litigation and a morass. And so it seemed to me that if no one from the governor's office and no one from City Hall was talking to The Garden about moving, and yet The Garden had been talking to these folks for well over a year about the theater move, that it was time to light a candle instead of curse the darkness and stop. Because, look, we can talk about The Garden moving however much we like until the government-- the mistake that was made in 2013 in terms of how we perceived what happened with the special permit is the sword of Damocles wasn't over The Garden's head to move. It was over the government's head to propose a double-block site near mass transit. That never happened, and it still isn't happening. And so as far as I'm concerned, as a person who likes to build things and see this improve and not just draw pretty pictures, it seemed to me that this was the best and most viable and achievable path to fixing Penn Station. But as I said in my testimony, just to close, our plan does not preclude a Garden move someday. If The Garden chooses to move, if the government approaches them with that, we can adaptively reuse our structure to make the station even greater. So I think it's important to understand that trajectory, if you will. So hopefully, that helps.
The plan that you had been behind before involved moving The Garden east of 7th Avenue, reclaiming from 31st to 32nd to 34th, 6th to 7th, and basically, like, eminent domain as needed, building a new MSG with skyscrapers to finance the whole thing. And that's something that you were pushing for up until, like, last year?
Well, yes, because, again, no one from the government seemed interested in talking about it. No one from the government was saying, "We are going to clear this site for The Garden" or "make a deal with them." I don't fully believe the $8.5 billion number, but I think it is a number that is in the billions. And that is what, I find it confounding that people assert, "Well, if you're buying the theater at fair market value as ASTM is, then somehow that's giving The Garden a give." And yet, those same advocates are saying The Garden should move. Well, what do we think would happen in order to get The Garden to move? They own their land. So it would be billions of dollars of public money that no one seems willing or able to put up to get The Garden to move. So as just someone, I consider myself a utopian pragmatist. And so, like, I just don't understand why we're talking about something that the government doesn't seem terribly interested in doing.
How much do you think it would cost, the plan that you were once advocating for? Like, how much would it cost to get MSG?
You know, it's, we had done some cost estimating, council member. It was, you know, for The Garden, it was like $2 billion, but there was site acquisition, you know. It could have been $4 or $5 billion easily. This was all pre-pandemic, so at that time, the skyscrapers you referenced in the plan were very valuable, and so those were helping to mitigate the cost of the plan. It's not clear that would be true today. So, you know, given the extraordinary transformation in our real estate market, it's really hard to hinge on something like that. Residential doesn't provide that same kind of leverage in terms of, I was Manhattan Director when we passed the Hudson Yards TIF, and so that was done mainly off the back of commercial office space. It's very difficult to do it residential. And so I think it's really important to talk about fixing Penn Station soon. And again, just bringing it full circle to the special permit, I don't see how you get to a 30% design, which is the compatibility standard that DCP has set in the language, as I understand it, without a viable plan that has a viable capital stack. And near as I can tell, the ASTM plan is the only plan that is viable and has a viable capital stack, that has project readiness for federal funding, and does not end up in a massive lawsuit with Madison Square Garden. And so that's--
Six months.
That's--
Six months.
Yes, and that we can be ready in six months with 30% design. And so that, to me, is the link back to the special permit in terms of the central finding that DCP is trying to make beyond these very modest public realm improvements that are in the near term.
The, I want to talk about the process, the RFP process that you're calling for. You're calling for an RFP. You want an opportunity to bid, to put in a bid into a competitive process to be a master developer of the station. Is that right?
Yes, that's right, council member. Do you want me to elaborate on that?
Yeah, and how, you know, in your mind, what would that look like? Who would be the arbiter of it? And how long would that take?
Right.
Since we talk about wanting to move quickly, how, these RFPs, they take a long time, no?
So as a basis, ESDC is in the habit of doing this exact type of RFP or RFEI. It could have a bunch of names for a master developer. They just did one for the Javits Center last week, I think it was, or two weeks ago. They did an RFEI for Penn Station master developer back in 2016, which was more of kind of a pre-GPP attempt. So that was a little bit more of a real estate deal, but same kind of broad-term RFP. So we think that a document like that could be assembled very quickly. It should be broad in its description.
Like Moynihan Station.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. And to be clear, council member, there was, I think, a little confusion with the last panel. An RFP for a contractor would be a very, very, very different thing, in fact, an entirely different thing than an RFP for a master developer. They're not one and the same. A master developer for an RFP could go out now, and that's something that we would be able to compete for with our whole concept inclusive of financing. And we already know exactly what we need from MSG to accommodate our plan precisely, and we think that we get all of those things, which means the text amendment could be further, or the text could be further amended very quickly for the council's consideration. A contractor RFP is just, you know, that's just procuring construction to build something else that'll get figured years from now.
Councilmember, may I just elaborate on one point? Because you brought up Moynihan, and I think it's a critical precedent, because that was a public-private partnership. And what's interesting is MSDC, the Moynihan Station Development Corporation, still exists. It's a subsidiary of ESDC. And it had board representation from all the constituent stakeholders, all the railroads, the FRA, the city, the state. And I believe there's community representation as well. And it seems to me that that model could easily be resuscitated to do this and do this quickly. And then every single plan on the table could be evaluated. And then there could be a quick process within the term of the special permit, whatever you decide in terms of the term of the special permit, where this compatibility question could be assessed beyond these minor and public realm improvements. I think that's the critical issue here.
Do you have a view on the length of the special permit?
Vishan may say more, but, you know, from our perspective, we've come up with a plan that we think works very well for a sort of reconfigured Garden and a greatly improved Penn Station. Because we can have 30% design in six months and come back to CPC and the council with exactly what you'd need to do to further amend the text and let The Garden stay in the long term, you know, in our, if our plan were to be adopted, the current permit could be for a short term because we'd be ready to reexamine this really soon.
I ask you about through-running. And, you know, the reason why through-running is so important and it keeps coming up is because the concern is that if you leave MSG where it is, we'll never have through-running. I know you gave a lengthy presentation about, so you've done some research into through-running. You presented it at Community Word Five. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, so we've taken a look at the existing platform-level plan, which is by and large a remnant of the original Penn Station. We believe that there's structural modification, well, the structure that's there now can be incorporated within through-running. It would need additional vertical circulation to the west, would need some platform modifications to the east. But by and large, we think we can, we could accommodate it within this plan. I think we also, as part of this plan, would be rebuilding all of the platform vertical circulation as well. So we feel there's an opportunity to calibrate the location-- So we feel there's an opportunity to calibrate the location and placement of that relative to the platforms within this plan.
Do you have the technical drawings and everything to support this? Is it in here?
No, it's not in there, but we do have them, and we would be happy to brief you, the committee, and anyone else in the council separately on that or any other aspect of our proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Real quick, Mr. Vashon, you did mention in your testimony that you believe it's illegal for the permit that MTA is seeking, and that you feel like it's a pathway to litigation and the inability to hold MSG's feet to the fire. Can you just explain that in more context on why you feel that way?
Sure, Chair. And I should specify that I am not an attorney, I'm an architect, but I was Manhattan director for almost five years at city planning. And I don't believe, and I think this is implicit actually in what DCP has stated, that I have never seen a situation where you could extract property, the reconstruction of a major bridge over a rail system, you know. It just seems like a drastic overreach. And, you know, I have a tremendous amount of respect for the MTA. They have a very difficult job. But I just think that this would end up in litigation. You know, I've been part of ULPs, many of us have been part of ULPs, in which in exchange for FAR, there have been developer contributions. You think of Juan Vanderbilt and so forth. That was raised at the City Planning Commission hearing. Commissioners made the point of saying this was a very, very different matter, because there was no additional FAR being given. And I think your colleague raised the question of, well, if MSG does not want these purported benefits that come from these changes, then how can you force them to do it? That question was raised repeatedly at the City Planning Commission hearing, and I think it just, to me, the big thing is, like you, I care about fixing Penn Station soon. And I don't know how you do that if this thing ends up in litigation. And Peter is the, is the expert on federal funding. We've heard this thing about, I think, council member, or excuse me, Borough President Levine brought it up about the fact that we have this short window of time with President Biden and this administration to get this infrastructure money. We are not going to get it if a cloud of litigation hangs over the site. And that's why I think ours is the only way to get to 30% quickly, because we have a collaborative way to deal with the issues at the garden instead of an adversarial way.
Thank you. There being no more questions for this panel. This panel is not excused. The next panel I'm going to call up is Pamela Wolf, Eugene Singaleno, Elizabeth Goldstein, and Liam Blank. And before any representative from MSG or MTA leaves, I just know you guys have a ton of follow-up. I didn't get to ask these questions, so I just want to make sure that you guys get follow-up. For MTA, you have stated that you are ready to reach an agreement with MSG now, but can you clarify whether you will be able to complete the needed track and platform work in 2025 and 2026 if you are not able to reach that agreement? And for MSG, there was conversation about the Hulu Theater. I didn't get to ask a question on the shows or the concerts that you guys have there. Can you provide the number of concerts, if there are any special permits that you require for the Hulu Theater as well? So those are just follow-ups for MTA and MSG when you get back to me. Thank you. Ms. Elizabeth Goldstein, can you please, you may begin. Okay, I don't think she's here yet. Mrs. Liam Blank, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Riley, Councilmember Botcher, and distinguished members of the subcommittee. I am Liam Blank, Chair of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee at the City Club of New York. I appreciate the opportunity to testify on the pivotal issue of the proposed 10-year extension for Madison Square Garden's special permit. For over a century, the City Club has upheld the crucial balance between the needs of residents, businesses, and the political landscape in New York City's urban planning. Today, I speak for an organization with a rich history of advocacy for the judicious development of our city's infrastructure, which strongly believes in the potential of Penn Station to play a more significant role in our tri-state region's vibrancy, functionality, and economic competitiveness. Penn Station, as you know, located beneath Madison Square Garden and accompanying the same block in the heart of Manhattan, served over 600,000 commuters and visitors each day before the pandemic. However, its operations and accessibility are compromised due to the constraints of coexisting with MSG. The current setup has resulted in a station that is congested, challenging to navigate, and not in alignment with New York's reputation as a global city. MSG's physical presence and operational demands negatively impact Penn Station's functionality, leading to persistent safety concerns, severe crowding during peak hours, and inadequate wayfinding. Furthermore, MSG's design severely inhibits local pedestrian and vehicular traffic during, around the site. From my personal experiences, I've seen how trucks loading for MSG events block bike lanes, sidewalks, and bus lanes for extended periods, causing significant disruption and safety concerns. Granting a 10-year permit extension will further entrench this dysfunction and remove the urgency for all stakeholders to collaboratively develop a future-proof strategic plan for Penn Station. Such a decision would be a grave error. We strongly dispute the notion that MSG can coexist with a revamped Penn Station. MSG's presence significantly limits New York's potential to plan competitively for the needs and amenities of the 21st century. I'm here today to urge you with all the conviction and urgency this issue warrants to reject the proposed 10-year special permit extension. Instead, we strongly recommend a shorter-term permit of ideally three years or less. This term will maintain necessary pressure on MSG and its partners to develop a concrete relocation plan and a more actionable funding strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Eugene, you may begin.
My name is Eugene Singaleno, and I was the only at-risk displacement individual that was actually a member of the Empire State Development's Penn Station Community Advisory Working Group. I have a deep understanding of their Penn Station project plan, and I represent hundreds of residents, 400 businesses, and 10,000 employees that will lose their homes, offices, and jobs with multiple city blocks destroyed by this outdated, fatally flawed plan. One of the worst mistakes in this plan is allowing Madison Square Garden to remain on top of Penn Station, which locks the busiest transit hub in North America below ground in the basement and handcuffs any truly significant transit improvement. New York deserves a world-class, above-ground, through-running station that is the center of a unified regional rail network. Transit experts, architects, engineers, civic organizations, community boards, and most of our elected officials all agreed that it would be in the best interest of New York City if Madison Square Garden moved. Moving MSG will be expensive, but it is far less expensive and devastating than condemning two city blocks to be demolished, only to build a stub-end, southern-expansion terminal station for New Jersey Transit with no possibility of through-running till 2080. Removing MSG and all its master support columns would allow far superior transit planning and implementation, including major capacity increases within Penn Station's existing footprint. If MSG is moved, it would definitely negate or diminish the need to destroy the surrounding neighborhood and make Penn construction not only easier, but far less expensive. Additionally, it is unfair that MSG does not pay any property taxes or pay anything to improve the very transit issues that their problems and locations create. Estimated to be a tax loss to New York City of $43 million a year, this is special interest at its worst, and there is broad consensus among economists and researchers that the government subsidies for these sports stadiums are not an efficient use of scarce public resources. The recent report from the New York City Independent Budget Office confirms this. Huge, big rigs, production trucks.
Eugene, if you could have you wrap it up? Thanks.
Yes, sir. You, as you know, they block many, many of the aspects with production trucks, including cables and, and trucks unloading. But even the just-released compatibility report by the railroad states MSG is not compatible to Penn Station. Everyone already knows this. We urge for our at-risk community and citizens that the Honorable City Council reject Madison Square Garden's special operating permit in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Next, we're going to have Pamela Wolf. Pamela, you may begin.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to sit in a much more comfortable chair than those. I appreciate it. I am Pamela Wolf, board member and former Save Chelsea president. I am not a sports fan, but I have a fond memory of Madison Square Garden. I went to Mike Todd's birthday party for Elizabeth Taylor, and that's a very fond memory. It was not, however, in the present Madison Square Garden. It was in the one on 8th Avenue and 50th Street. I think I make my point with that. Save Chelsea strongly opposes granting Madison Square Garden a special permit to operate its arena in perpetuity. We support Community Board Five's recommendation to deny any special permit unless MSG formally agrees to pursue relocation and unless the length of the permit is restricted to three years. The time is ripe to find an alternative location for MSG. Midtown Manhattan is decompressing at a historical rate. Per the New York Times, this city now has nearly 75 million square feet of vacant office space, enough to fill more than 26 Empire State buildings. The half-block formerly occupied by the Hotel Pennsylvania directly across Seventh Avenue from Penn Station is now a field of rubble and with no realistic prospect of development. Combined with the half-block to its north, it could handily accommodate a new MSG. Penn Station and the Hotel Pennsylvania were historically linked by a tunnel under Seventh Avenue. This connection could be restored as an indoor passage between the station and a new MSG, and even allow for creation of covered Penn Station access points to the north and to the east. Plans that would keep MSG above Penn Station will inevitably amount to unacceptable compromises. The two uses are clearly incompatible, as documented in the railroad's recently, recent report. Disagreements between representatives of the railroads and Madison Square Garden in the City Planning Commission's June 7th public hearing made it clear that only a seriously flawed resolution can ever really emerge. Madison Square Garden was built when Penn Station had even fewer users than the 200,000 it was built for. The new station now serves over 600,000, a number that is expected to grow significantly. The station's original platforms have been interrupted by countless columns introduced to support MSG, inhibiting not just circulation, but critical emergency egress. It is alarming that the station's egress travel distances exceed current code minimums by over 40%, and that its smoke purge capacity is substantially less than required by law. It must be said that this makes Penn Station especially vulnerable to a terror attack. Public officials who allow its unsafe condition to continue must share responsibility for any tragedy that may result. The fortune that would be spent on any solution keeping MSG above Penn Station could far more rewardingly be invested in better, separate homes for each. The ripple effect would benefit the entire city and inevitably, and invaluable enhance its power to attract visitors and talent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Next, we will have Tom Devaney, who will be speaking on behalf of Elizabeth Goldstein, who had to leave. Tom, you may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley and subcommittee members. Thank you, Chair Riley and subcommittee members. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony regarding Madison Square Garden's arena special permit application. I hope that you will take the time to review our written testimony, which provides greater detail than I will be able to share with you today. The operating permit before you is an opportunity for the city to support the transformation of both Penn Station and Madison Square Garden. We hope that you will provide that strong direction with the appropriate balance of carrots and sticks. The city council should grant an arena special permit for a maximum of only five years, not in perpetuity, as requested by MSG. The special use permit should not be extended beyond five years unless there is objective evidence that the reconfiguration or reciting of MSG has made significant planning progress at the time of an extension application. This is an opportunity to transform, transform a subpar train station, the nation's busiest, into a world-class one commensurate with its civic importance. If you grant an operating permit to MSG in perpetuity, we will have lost a key lever to ensuring a better future for the Penn District. In recent months, a new approach to Penn Station and Madison Square Garden has renewed hope for achieving a grand train hall and gracious public space. It shows that we have vastly more expansive options than have been presented to the public for an improved train hall and area circulation. We must not shy away from exploring selected, selecting amongst the most innovative options within the real practical constraints of the moment, including the available of federal funding. The public use of Penn Station must be paramount to all uses on the block, including Madison Square Garden and to Penn. Thank you for this opportunity to share comments today.
Thank you. Councilmember Botcher?
Tom, is it?
Yes.
From Municipal Arts Society, which historically was one of the lead organizations calling for MSG to be moved. When did the Municipal Arts Society come around to accepting that MSG's staying? And what, what is it about? Is it the ASTM plan in particular that the MAS likes? If you could walk us through and, and explain that?
Well, we, we did find that the ASTM plan is, given the constraints of keep, the constraint of keeping MSG in its place, is, is a very sound design. We're not necessarily wedded to it per se, but we thought that it was a, a good alternative, given the constraints. We're also being realistic in that, number one, we felt that regarding the 10 years or the five years, that, that, that 10 years would be too much time, and that the opportunity for the funding is there, and it's incumbent upon the transit agencies to, to come, come together and maximize that opportunity for, for funding. So we're, we thought that the five years was, was acceptable for, for the city council and the, the agencies to come to a, a, a decision on the future. Now, our position has always been that MSG in a different location allows for a much better design. But we're also being realistic, and, and that is certainly our, our, our hope. But we also are being realistic and felt that the ASTM plan is a very reasonable design alternative with the constraints given.
To Eugene, Liam, and Pamela, do you, have you seen, one thing missing from today, it's been like four hours, is like a fleshed-out plan for moving MSG with some numbers attached to it and some details. Have you seen anything like this that could help inform our plans here?
I'm sorry, council member, I, I missed, I couldn't hear the first part of it.
It was more for the, your fellow panelists about the need to see a plan or proposal with some details about how you would move Madison Square Garden and where it would go.
I can't speak for them, but I have not seen, and as someone who's been studying this issue of Madison Square Garden and also through running at Penn Station for a number of years now, I have not seen a comprehensive cost-benefit analysis of either moving or relocating Madison Square Garden, as well as actually looking at the feasibility of through running, of which of which there are numerous ways in which it can be achieved. And that's important to point out because it's often described by the railroads as sort of one monolithic version, and that sort of sets it up as an easy straw man argument. So we haven't seen anything that we could actually compare it with the Penn expansion proposal, for example. So we look forward to seeing that, hopefully.
I would just say that, yes, it seems that MSG is not particularly interested in trying to find a change. I think they're worried on a number of issues. They're worried about can they find a location that works for them, which they might be able to find. I think they're worried about how much it would cost to move and how much the government would actually put on their plan. But they're also very worried about moving would entail the loss of their permanent tax exemption. And as long as that permanent tax exemption is in place, they're not going to want to move because they're not going to want to take the chance that they would lose that. I think if the state made a change and took away their permanent tax exemption, I think you would find that they would probably be more amenable to actually seriously looking at the case of moving because it's one of the oldest arenas. And they're building a new sphere in Las Vegas. I'm sure they would love to have a new spot with a new place, but it's not worth giving up such an amazing tax exemption when all the rest of us are paying taxes.
Thank you all.
I didn't get a chance to.
Oh, you were just, I shouldn't have known.
That's okay. I waited.
No, I wanted to hear from you, please.
I think I'm old enough to realize that people don't think in terms of major upheavals like moving MSG would be. It's a lack of imagination, and I think there's not enough public pressure. I think that MSG, maybe in the backs of their minds, they realize that a move is inevitable, as has been the case in the last two moves of MSG. But they're probably terrified of the prospect. I think that this city and this country deserve to have a world-class train facility with through-running, above-grade, dramatic, imposing structure, and that it would change the face of the city and our economy. It would be a major, major asset for us to have. Somebody had better get brave and try to see that it happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This panel's excuse. The last in-person panel that signed up that will be calling is Anthony Donain, David Holowak, Matthew Robinson, and Joanne Dunbar. Excuse me if I mispronounce her name. Haloka, sorry. And if there's anyone in the chambers who wished to testify and did not do so, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms to fill out a speaker's card, and we will make sure that your voice is heard. First, we'll have David Haloka. David, can you just press the button for the mic, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm David Haloka, Chelsea resident. As an architect, I've read with great concern the compatibility report for Madison Square Garden and Penn Station, prepared by the railroads. Fundamental safety concerns of egress and smoke evacuation are compromised. As Pamela noted, some egress travel distances exceed code minimums by over 40%. To know of these risks and fail to take appropriate action is to assume responsibility for them. The longer a permit Madison Square Garden receives, the longer these emergency conditions will persist. As you make your decision on this permit, it should be foremost in your minds that lives are at stake. Granting Madison Square Garden's request for an arena permit in perpetuity, as requested, would leave the city with no leverage at all to make Penn Station safe. We've already seen how unresponsive the garden is to a 10-year permit like the one for which the City Planning Commission just voted. The risk Penn Station poses to human life is far too pressing for anything longer than the three-year permit recommended by CB5. The station's critical importance to the city and potential as a terror target leave it unconscionably vulnerable. Driving Madison Square Garden to find a new home, the option that would allow for the safest and most appropriately uplifting and welcoming Penn Station, requires the kind of pressure and urgency a three-year permit would bring to bear. The longer a permit MSG receives, the more its incompatibility with Penn Station is our problem. The shorter a permit, the more it's MSG's problem to solve. Creating a Penn Station worthy to stand as New York's main entrance will require vision, initiative, and determination, the kind of big thinking that created world-class urban spaces like Rockefeller Center and the High Line. That won't come of giving Madison Square Garden ever more time to stay where and essentially what it is. The City Planning Commission's vote to support a 10-year permit contingent only on peripheral improvements, and MSG's hypothetical agreement with 30% design documents for a renovated Penn Station is deeply disappointing. We need a Penn Station commensurate with New York's greatness, not benches, signage, and partially improved truck loading. As we've already seen, 10 years might as well be perpetuity when it comes to motivating the garden's owner. Approving only a three-year permit will show MSG the city means business this time. That's the message they need to hear, loud and clear.
Thank you. Joanne Dunbar?
Hi, Joanne Dunbar. I'm a long-term resident of New York City and taxpayer and a frequent attendee of events at Madison Square Garden. I'm a big hockey fan and music lover, and from October to May, I am at MSG probably at least one to two times a week. I wish I'd been there more in June this year, but that was not to be. So when I bought my Rangers season tickets 13 years ago, the accessibility of MSG and its proximity to work and home were key factors. Our offices at the time were in Times Square and then moved to Manhattan West, so it was very easy to get to MSG. More importantly, it was very easy for any of my clients or colleagues that I wanted to go to games with. If they live in any of the outer boroughs, Long Island, Westchester, Connecticut, or New Jersey, it was very easy for them to attend a game at MSG. Myself, I'm a resident of New York. I lived in Midtown and most recently just moved to Park Row across the street. And I take the subway to the games, to and from the games, all the time. The public transport's really important. Often, I'll go on my own to meet colleagues or clients, and I have no hesitation as a woman traveling by myself to and from the games. I also don't think we can overlook that Madison Square Garden is one of the most iconic landmarks in New York City. There is so much history there. I have friends, family, and colleagues from around the world that come to New York City, and every one of them, without fail, has a bucket list item to see something at Madison Square Gardens. I tend to get that phone call. I think it's my sparkling personality, but it could be that I have Rangers season tickets, so I hear from all of them. Madison Square Garden is a very special place, and there is nothing more electric than watching a Rangers playoff game at the Garden. I am also a New York City taxpayer, and with all the important issues that we have in our city right now, including housing insecurity, equity in education, managing crime, I truly cannot understand how spending the time, energy, and money on moving MSG could be on anyone's priority list. So from my perspective, MSG is exactly where it should be, and we need to make sure that we can keep those bucket list items coming true at the world's most famous arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Robinson?
Hi, my name is Matthew Robinson. What I've set at this table is basically a model. This is Madison Square Garden. This is the roadway or the taxiway. This is to Penn Plaza. This is 31st Street. This is 33rd Street, and this is where the Hulu Theater is. One of the things that everyone said that was part of the railroad was that the need to get certain components from Madison Square Garden. Okay, I need this. I need this. And I need this. If I can't get those things, I will not be able to do the things that are necessary for there to be a Penn Station. So critical of what the railroad has said, but no one has said for Madison Square Garden, is that we are willing to strongly consider taking these components and giving it to them, swapping it, selling it, or whatever that might be. In addition to it, is in terms of it being three years, five years, 10 years, in three years, we will know whether these components can be taken, if they're willing to do it or not. And if they're not willing to do it, it's a moot point because these things are critical. Hulu Theater is still is very critical in the components. So without those negotiations happening, and I think it can happen in three years, then you'll know whether the parties are serious in getting everything done. In addition to it, as STM said, you can remove those things. With these components, you will have a Penn Station that's actually nice. And okay, Madison Square Garden moves, which STM said is they can move, and then we can integrate the midsection very easily. But without the, what I will say, the bookends, there's no point going further. Thank you. Oh, and I advocate that in three years, you'll know whether it's a good deal, and also you'll know if there's the Biden administration and a whole bunch of other components. Thank you.
Thank you for your demonstration, Matthew. Anthony, you got to come with something better next.
Thanks so much for having me. I'm still trying to figure out the water bottle and the cups, but I think you did a great job. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Anthony Donahue. I have been going to Madison Square Garden since I was eight years old. I'm 39 now. The first event I ever went to was the Ringling Brothers' Barnum &amp; Bailey Circus. I've been a Knicks season ticket holder since 2004. I've been going to Knicks games since 1994. The first Knick game I ever went to was actually our 16th straight victory versus the Miami Heat, April 2nd, 1994. I live in the North Bronx, Co-op City. I hop on the two. Are you from there, too?
That's my district I represent.
Oh, we got to talk about something after this, by the way.
Yes, we do.
No, because I go running towards City Island, and those people on mopeds, they're dangerous.
All right, we'll talk about it after. Focus on the permit.
Just saying, just saying. All right, so I hop on the two-train, one shot, get off at Penn Station, go right upstairs. Everybody talks about it's so complicated around Madison Square Garden. It's pretty easy to me. Whether it's the two-train, whether you come from Brooklyn, Queens, Long Island, Westchester, Connecticut, to me, it's very easy. You get off the train, you go right upstairs, you go watch hopefully the Knicks or Rangers win, go to a great concert. It's an amazing place. I've been lucky enough to go to many arenas around the country to watch the Knicks play. And I'm not just saying this because I love the Knicks and I bleed orange and blue. There's no arena like the Garden. I've been to Staples Center. It's cool. It's not the Garden. I've been to Chicago, Phoenix, obviously the local ones, Boston, DC, Philly. They don't touch the Garden. Also, the Garden of Dreams does amazing things for so many kids around the world in the area. My little sister, who recently lost to brain cancer three years ago, they were very big with us. They sent us to a Cher concert. My sister was an old soul. She loved Cher. They gave us a suite. And when she was sick, they always did things for us all the time, things I'll never forget. Anytime I brought her to the games, they were extremely accommodating, especially her last year because she was in a wheelchair, so she needed a lot of extra help. So the Garden, the Garden of Dreams, the Great Garden Security, Usher's guest services was absolutely incredible. And like I said, I know the Garden moved a few times way before most of us were probably even born. It belongs in one spot and one spot only, and that's on the corner of 33rd and 7th, and 8th and 31st and all that. I don't got the cups and bottles like this man over here, but you know what I mean.
Thank you, Anthony. Councilmember Butcher have questions for this panel?
I've also seen Cher at the Garden.
Yeah, we went, yeah, my sister, she was 21 when she passed, but she was an old soul, so she liked all those artists, unlike me. You know, I'm more into new stuff.
Sorry to hear about your sister's passing.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much to this panel for testifying. Anthony, please see one of the sergeants to give you full information so I can follow up with you about the concern.
Someone's going to get hurt on those paths, by the way.
Yeah, you said City Island. That's Councilmember Velazquez's district.
Well, I'm in Section 5, so I go running towards City Island.
Okay, so we'll talk about it after, all right? All right, thank you so much. This panel's not excused. We're going to go to our panel online. The first panel I'm going to call is... Oh, I'm sorry, Angelina. This is, you should go.
Oh, no, it's fine. So again, we're going to do two minutes per witness. If there's anyone else here in person, just let us know. Let one of the sergeants know, and we'll put you on a panel later. But the first panel is Aaron Sanders, Jessica Walker, Kate Cunningham, Bria Donahue, and Kevin Hushanji. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing names. So the first name is Aaron Sanders. Aaron, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, but I don't have the ability to start my video.
That's okay. You can go ahead. We can hear you.
Aaron, you may begin.
Great. Good afternoon, Chair Riley and subcommittee members. My name is Aaron Sanders, and I'm the Public Policy Director at the Association for a Better New York. On behalf of ADNE, I testify before you to express our support of Madison Square Garden's proposal to extend its special permit to continue its operating at its world premier arena. Madison Square Garden has been the preeminent sports, civic, and entertainment arena in New York City since 1879. MSG is a world-renowned venue that sits at the nexus of commercial and tourism activity, attracting upwards of 4 million people annually and serving as one of New York City's most vital assets. MSG's ability to attract top-tier talent and host world-class events makes it a must-visit destination for spectators and performers alike. Given the prominent historical significance and its impact on the city's economy, ADNE contends that MSG should be granted a special permit to continue its operating in its current location. Additionally, the economic benefits of MSG operating at full capacity are tremendous. Each year, MSG employs 12,000 workers and contributes $2 billion to New York City and state's economy and supports thousands of more in jobs outside of the arenas at bars, restaurants, and attractions in Midtown Manhattan that relies on MSG's crowds to survive. MSG is part of the fabric of New York, and ADNE strongly supports the special permit to allow for the continued operation of the arena. As a strong, vibrant New York City, it requires an active and busy Madison Square Garden, operating at full capacity. As we continue to recover from the economic devastation of the pandemic, reducing MSG's operating capacity would have a devastating ripple effect on the tourism and hospitality industry and New York City at large. If MSG's operation permit were eliminated, it would cost thousands of jobs. It is imperative that New York City grants MSG a new special permit to continue operating in its current location, and we hope that you will support their proposal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Aaron. Next will be Jessica Walker. Jessica, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I'm Jessica Walker. I'm the President of the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce. For more than 100 years, we've been focused on advancing the economic vitality of our region by building a strong and thriving climate for the broad business community. And of course, that includes small businesses like local storefronts and bodegas, as well as large corporations such as Madison Square Garden. As you know, MSG is currently in the process of renewing its operating permit, which is soon set to expire. Without this permit, the arena would be unable to host events with more than 2,500 spectators. And so we think it's time to renew MSG's operating permit in perpetuity, ensuring the world's most famous arena in the world's greatest city is operating at its full capacity. Without a special permit, Knicks and Rangers games, as well as major concerts and a host of other special events, would be reduced to a handful of spectators, if they happened at all. We should not be using the viability of their entire business as a bargaining chip in negotiations. Madison Square Garden is responsible for $2 billion in economic impact to the city and state. Each year, they have been extremely helpful to the small businesses that are in the adjacent area, helping them to bounce back, bringing in crowds that want to grab a drink or dinner before they attend the show at MSG. And so we really need them to be here as we continue to recover from COVID. We need major landmarks like MSG to lead our recovery, and that requires a renewal of their special operating permit. They need the stability, which is also in the best permit. They need the stability, which is also in the best interest of New York. And so, now is the time to commit to anchor institutions like MSG that have committed to us and have invested here. We really hope that you will support MSG at this time, and as I said, we urge you to renew the Garden's special operating permit in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And Jessica, just for clarification, you said Manhattan Borough of Commerce, correct?
Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, correct.
Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, thank you. Next, we'll have Kate Cunningham. Kate, if you could hear me, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley, Councilmember Botcher, and members of the subcommittee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Kate Cunningham. I'm the Director of Government Affairs at the New York Building Congress. We represent over 500 constituent organizations and over 250,000 skilled tradespeople professionals who design, build, and own the city's buildings. The Building Congress strongly supports the application to allow the continued operation of the Madison Square Garden arena through the renewal of their special operating permit. We firmly believe Madison Square Garden is vital to the economic development and cultural vibrancy of New York City, adding over 12,000 jobs to the city's economy, attracting over 4 million visitors to Midtown Manhattan, and generating more than $2 billion in economic activity for our city and state. A strategic location near Penn Station makes it the perfect venue for hosting major concerts, events, Knicks and Ranger games, and other cherished public entertainment throughout the year. We urge you to consider these important economic contributions the arena makes to our city. The permit would allow for events with more than 2,500 spectators, and any reduction in its operating capacity would not only affect the arena itself, but also have economic consequences for the businesses that operate in its vicinity. A full post-pandemic recovery in New York City requires the success of major institutions like MSG. While we actively support Penn Station revitalization, we also firmly believe that the Garden should remain in its current location. Renewing its special permit would ensure its continued operation, allowing it to play a critical role in our city's recovery and future prosperity. The Building Congress recognizes the unique cultural and economic value of MSG, and we urge you to reaffirm your commitment to its ongoing success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate. Next will be Bria Donahue. Bria, if you could hear me, you may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley, and members of the subcommittee for holding this hearing today. I'm Bria Donahue, Government Affairs Manager at AIA New York. We represent architects and design professionals committed to positively impacting the physical and social qualities of our city. For too long, commuters and visitors have suffered from inadequate accessibility, efficiency, and connectivity at Penn Station. Right now, there is an opportunity to create a transformative change and design a space that meets the current demands of the largest transit hub in North America. Recognizing the extraordinary significance of MSG's location directly above Penn Station, we believe that the following key principles must be considered in helping to inform the decision-making process for MSG special permit. First is the civic importance of the public realm surrounding Penn Station and MSG. The new criteria outlined in DCP zoning text amendment elevate the primacy of the public realm by ensuring high-quality outdoor space, improve pedestrian access, and more specific criteria for MSG's truck-loading operations. Second is the need for a transformation of Penn Station. Despite its fundamental importance as a linchman to the city and regional economy, Penn Station has not benefited from a complete reconstruction since 1963. The design outlined in MTA's Penn Master Plan addresses critical life-safety deficiencies within the station, improves station circulation, provides ADA accessibility, and enhances user experience through consolidated concourse featuring high ceilings, extensive daylighting, and more visible and generous station entrances oriented to passenger destinations. Third is the interrelationship of MSG and Penn Station. Under the new DCP text amendment, MSG is required to be consistent and compatible with Penn Station, and the transfer of property is critical to achieving the vision for the project. AIA New York supports an appropriate limited-term extension of MSG special permit tied to DCP's criteria that prioritize the creation of vibrant public spaces in and around Penn Station and MSG, as well as the realization of a modernized Penn Station with the civic presence and scale envisioned by the MTA and Regions Railroads. Now is the time to return the major transportation hub to design that New Yorkers deserve.
Time expired, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last person on this panel is Kevin Hushangi. Kevin, if you could hear me, you may begin. Kevin, are you there?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. You may begin.
Okay, thank you. To the subcommittee, thank you for your time, and I'll be brief. My name is Kevin Hushangi. I own American Whiskey, a restaurant on 30th Street between 7th and 8th Avenue. I'm here to speak on behalf of Madison Square Garden, keeping their special operating permit in perpetuity. When we opened 10 years ago, the world's most famous arena in the world's most famous city was the reason we chose a space on a rundown block needing new businesses to revive. We achieved success in large part to MSG and their adoring followers. The COVID-19 pandemic caused us to lose a major part of our neighborhood office business, and sadly, it has not returned. Madison Square Garden has helped us tremendously and often overlooked in all their world-class events and charity work. It's that they truly care about the neighborhood and people with jobs in the neighborhood. We couldn't exist without them, and New York City is a better place with them in this location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. This panel is not excused. The next panel I'll be calling up is Steve Marshall, William Barak, Lynn Ellsworth, Samuel Turvey, and Andrew Cronson. Andrew Cronson, you may begin.
Good afternoon. I'm unfortunately not able to start my video. I apologize, but I'll begin regardless.
It's all right. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you all for the, truly the extraordinary opportunity to testify today. My name is Andrew Cronson, and I am a student at Columbia University who commutes daily through Penn Station. I also commuted to NYU, and even had my graduation in the Hulu Theater at MSG. I have sadly understood the regrettable transit situation at Penn Station each day, not once but twice daily. I love the enthusiasm that patrons of the Garden have had for their arena, but that is no solace for the 600,000 people who rely on the station below for their livelihood. Placing the discretionary whims of a select few with funds to spare, like those we have heard, above the public good can be described as New York's biggest shame. Do not believe the hype of promoters that the current situation is tenable or even desirable. The consequence of maintaining the status quo is immeasurable, both for now and for my generation and beyond. No number of Billy Joel concerts, Garden of Dreams corporate responsibility stunts, token donations for public plazas, through-block atriums, or cosmetic facelifts will ameliorate the sobering reality that Madison Square Garden and Penn Station are invariably and permanently incompatible from the perspective of the public. This application for a special permit in perpetuity must be denied outright. Without reconsideration, and a temporary extension of just a few years at most be allowed to pave way for this essential and critical relocation, which has already happened four times before this. Fact of the matter is that Madison Square Garden was already given order to move, and the city council has an obligation to see that through. Like Yankee Stadium, which recently moved, it'll be a win-win.
Time has expired. Thank you.
Can we do next Steve Marshall?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I am a resident of 30th Street, which is a block away from the Garden, and we've been alarmed for the last couple of years with a GPP from the governor who has recently abandoned the plan. But our block is still in the crosshairs of Amtrak and the MTA and New Jersey Transit. To be destroyed so they can build some kind of tracks or terminals. Now, there's multiple ways to do this project without destroying our block with hundreds of people, thousands of jobs. And as a matter of fact, I played at American Whiskey. It's in my building. It's downstairs. Maybe Kevin doesn't know that our building will be destroyed if the Garden stays there and they put the Gateway Project through onto our block. The only project plan I've heard that's good so far is the ATSN plan, which does not destroy our block. The other plan to leave the Garden there destroys our block. So, if the Hulu Theater can go and save our block and surrounding blocks with, I've heard all these people talking about how the businesses in the area benefit from the Garden, but all those businesses, the Molly Weave Pub, and all the businesses, American Whiskey, on our block will be destroyed, not to mention the 150-year-old St. John the Baptist Church is on our block that feeds the homeless. I don't see the Garden feeding too many homeless, you know? I've also played at the Garden. It was incredible, you know? And, you know, the guy talked about every musician wants to play the Garden. Not too many get to play there, but every musician in New York has been on 30th Street either rehearsing or using the music stores there. It's known as Music Street. When I moved into my building 47 years ago, Tommy Ramone lived downstairs with me. I, you know, I did sound for the Ramones. It's a major music block that should be landmarked. The 150-year-old fully functional second-class Catholic church should be landmarked, and yet, they want to destroy it. So, whether they move the Garden or not, I like the ATSN plan. The MTA plan is a leftover from what the Garden came up with that they just cobbled together. The ATSN guy's been working on it for a while, and thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next will be Lynn Ellsworth. Lynn, you may begin.
Hello, I'm sorry. I timed this beforehand, thinking I had three minutes. It goes to two and a half. May I continue?
No, Lynn, you may start right now.
Sorry, I can't do it. I guess I'll decline to do it. I can't cut it off too much. Thank you.
Lynn, are you testifying? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I tried to explain that my testimony runs to two minutes and 30 seconds. I thought I had three minutes.
That's fine, that's fine. Just go ahead.
All right, thank you. The destruction of Penn Station in the 60s came about through a cozy arrangement between two brothers, James and Irving Feld. One was a real estate developer and the head of city planning, and the other was a financier. They replaced the station with Madison Square Garden, the tower known as Two Penn, and the underground rat's nest we all know that's the train station. It wasn't just an architectural crime, though. It was a crime against the public good whose repercussions we are still contending with. Fast forward to the present and it's déjà vu all over again. MSG is now owned by a real estate mogul, Dolan, whose deal with the city has allowed him to avoid nearly a billion in property taxes. His neighbor, fellow mogul Roth of Vornado, owns Two Penn, has also played rough with the public good. Roth has re-clad Two Penn to resemble Hudson Yards, demolished the historic Hotel Pennsylvania, and blights the neighborhood to get the state to use eminent domain on his behalf. Although his project is temporarily on hold, it's not officially dead. The state is still pushing a plan to seize an entire block to give Roth the rights to erect 10 towers eventually, most of them super-talls. And among the victims of the plan are the Capuchin monks of the Franciscan Order, who took a vow of poverty and have served the poor out of their church since 1870. The public transit agencies, MTA, Amtrak, and New Jersey Transit have a big stake in this game. Because they entertain hopes for unspecified sums of money from Vornado, they're silent about Two Penn and the mess that Vornado is making, but they are not silent about the mess that is MSG. Their report says it's incompatible. It's in the way, as is Two Penn, but the agencies didn't go that far. Moreover, advocates of through-running point out that we need to take out hundreds of columns that support MSG because they limit track improvements needed for through-running. So, instead of contending with these realities, our technocrats are bending over backwards, coming up with workarounds to please Dolan and Roth. That isn't good. The policy of mogul pleasing limits our ability to transform the busiest train station in the country into a 21st century transit hub. So...
Time expired, thank you.
In all this debate, there's a huge elephant in the room that nobody will talk about. And so, this is where I could have gone slightly over. If ever there was a good case for using the state's power of eminent domain in a just way, this is it. Don't use eminent domain against the Capuchin friars. Use it to take Madison Square Garden and Two Penn away from the moguls. It's a crime that our democracy, that ESD will not wield the powers of Leviathan for the people instead of enriching real estate moguls. Eminent domain used the right way at Penn against the moguls would cut the Gordian nut that has made solving the Penn mess so impossible. It would even change public support for the use of eminent domain, support that was eroded since Pito versus New London in 2005. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Next will be Samuel Turvey. Samuel, you may begin.
Thank you. Sam Turvey, Rethink: New York City. Amanda Burden, James Dolan, Jane Jacobs, Andy Beiford. Why Amanda Burden? You do need to go back and ask her what the 10-year permit was about. Clearly, Madison Square Garden was supposed to move, although they may have had some of their lawyers put some elastic language in the final documents. We very much support CB5's resolution calling for a short, three-year permit so that Madison Square Garden has to pay attention to the public. James Dolan, he's gotten $1 billion in forgone taxes. He was supposed to move the Garden. Instead, he put $1 billion into the current building, and he's put $2.5 billion into the sphere in Las Vegas. I asked you as our city council, why does Las Vegas get a free arena and we're told that we have to pay for his? This is ridiculous. Las Vegas gets a free arena and we frankly get the bum's rush. Jane Jacobs, people ask if Rethink has engineering to support it. We can talk offline about that. We have plenty of prominent engineers that support our plan. But some of us aren't engineers. I'm not. Well, you know what? Jane Jacobs wasn't a trained city planner. Should we take her books off the shelves, or did they contain an abundance of truths? Rethink's plan contained such an abundance of truths, and they were very much influenced by her. Andy Beiford, why do I bring him up? The public knows and trusts him. Let's him look at the through-running plan. I promise you, he's not going to be nickel-and-diming us about engineering. He's going to try to figure out whether there are essential truths there or not. If he tells us it can't happen, we'll listen to him. But I suspect he's going to tell us it can happen, and it will be one of the greatest things that ever happened to New York City. And it will be much better if Madison Square Garden moves. Through-running operates much better without the Garden atop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. The next person we'll call up is William Barak. William, are you there?
No.
It seems like we lost William. William, if you hear me, please, you could sign on back, or please submit your testimony to LynnUseTestimony@NYC.gov. The last panel that I will be calling on remote will be William Cogan, Adam Bronstein, Hector Chevillier, Josiah Darnell, Kareem Ahmed, and John Mudd.
Adam, call it out.
So, we'll start first with Adam Bronstein. Adam, if you could hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. The Empire State Building, the Chrysler Building, the Statue of Liberty, and Madison Square Garden are the most iconic buildings in the greatest city in the world. Only the Sistine Chapel has a more recognizable ceiling than the world's most famous arena. I work as part of the more than the 20 unions that support MSG alone. For the most part, these folks all take the many modes of transportation that come through Penn Station to get to their destination. For the guests who are coming to the mecca of basketball, as well as boxing, and the home of the most unforgettable live entertainment on the planet, Madison Square Garden could not be better situated to service their guests and employees. We should not be discussing the length of time of a permit, but how to best help MSG continue to provide these experiences. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next person I'll call up is John Mudd. John, you may begin.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. My name's John Mudd. I'm with the Midtown South Committee Council, and I've lived here for 36 years, and I've been, our council's been running for just as long. Okay, we can assume that the developers have, that corporations in general have a preference in our city, and that's from our health care, our housing, our, any kind of development. We know they have such a hold on this city. That's not a hyperbolic statement at all. And this favoritism has led us down a a very bad path. I mean, it's, it's from our health care to our food resources and to our housing, and now this Penn Station has been an ongoing battle, and we have to rethink our city, and we have to put the Penn Station, we have to, we can't have the community put into a Penn Station. We need a Penn Station that's fit for the community. We have to think about the surrounding area. We have to understand its relationship to the communities around. And Dolan has been crushing, Dolan, this, this, this arena is keeping us from really thinking big and changing our pathway and changing our future. And, and we're at a point in our lives that our city is destroying itself. It's eating itself up, and it's caused that the preferences have always gone to our developers. We have to start thinking about the people, and this is your chance, the committee's chance, to start putting things in motion in the right direction, and that's what we're asking for.
Thank you, John. Next we'll have Kareem Ahmed. Kareem, you may begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for hosting. I had just, my name is Kareem. I'm an architect. I work for, or also Rethink NYC, and I worked on a lot of feasibility studies for our through-running studies. And I just wanted to clarify a point from earlier that it's not necessarily impossible, and I would qualify and say I'm renewing the permit, but I did want to just clarify an earlier point. It is possible to do have through-running or to have improved rail operations beneath the garden, but it is far, far, far from optimal. Due to the circular layout of the garden's structure, the columns that touch down into Madison, into Penn Station are sort of have a friction with the rectangular nature, which reflects the original station. And that's why you're always going to have limited options in terms of circulation, more complications, more cost, and a much more difficult time improving Penn Station as long as Madison Square Garden is on top of it. I would also add that to the points made earlier, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul in the grand scope of our city by allowing us to grow an art anywhere it is. We can find better places for it. We can make it there. We can make it better. We can make it just as great of an attraction, if not more than it is right now, and still retain the ability to have a magnetic transportation facility in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kareem. Next I'm going to call up Josiah Darnell. Josiah, you may begin. Josiah, you may begin.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, so, you know, Josiah Darnell, I am currently a part of the garden, also a production assistant for MSG Networks, and I just really want to speak to the fact that the proximity of the garden and where it's at has just been nothing but beneficial to me and my experience there. The fact that it's above Penn Station has just been so convenient for me. With me living in Queens, it's really just a bus and a train ride there, and I'm at work, I'm at the garden, and I'm involved in everything else that Garden Dreams has to offer. Like so many have said before me that the Garden Dreams have been so impactful to so many kids and their families. I'm a testament to that. And the fact that I've been able to make so many trips there, as well as my grandmother, as well as my family, they've all been able to see me a part of those foundations programs, and they've been able to enjoy everything that the garden has to offer. So the fact that it's there, it's convenient, it's beneficial, and not to mention the fact that it's just around so many good attractions. It's an attraction itself, you know, and I think that they should be granted that special permanent in perpetuity, just to continue that way. They can continue to be as beneficial as they have been and impact everybody that they have been impacted to.
Thank you. Next person I'll call up is William Cogan. William, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name's Bill Cogan, and I'm a stagehand at Madison Square Garden. The garden is a state-of-the-art arena that rightly deserves the label of the world's most famous arena. In the next two weeks, the garden will be hosting three Drake, one Billy Joel, and seven Phish concerts. And while that's going on, we will host an NYPD graduation. Please come to the garden, experience the wonder of the place. MSG sits on top of Penn Station, which is an important place. Penn Station is home to Long Island Railroad, New Jersey Transit, Amtrak, and a host of subway lines. There is no better place to locate an entertainment facility than where MSG is located. Hundreds of thousands of guests have benefited from the mass transit access that Garden's location provides. In 2024, NYC is going to implement congestion pricing for Midtown and Lower Manhattan. What type of message does it send that you want to consider moving MSG from the most accessible mass transit location in New York City to somewhere else? There are many great designs for Penn Station that include the garden and its current location. Please leave the garden where it is and create a great Penn Station. You can have both. Please renew the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to call up one more panel, so this panel is excused. I'm going to be calling up Bill Barak again, and also Hector Chevillier. Bill, Hector, if you can hear me, please accept. Okay, we have Bill here. Bill, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Bill.
Okay. There are 10 things I want to say. One is, the request for a permit should not be given. Two, one reason why MSG could walk like a couple hundred steps probably, maybe more, to a location like by the Hilton Center, which is mentioned before. What could happen is MSG could stay where it is now, a new MSG could be built. It's built, MSG could cross over and be a nice world place. Arena will fix up. Arena, doesn't have to be the same arena with Nick fans we're going to, I went to Nick fans also. If we're set about to garden in the 30s, well, there's no reason why the garden dreams can't continue, you know? No one's going to say something, charities, jobs. There'll be more jobs, not less jobs. Do not let this way be going down after 10 years. Job, up it down. Build a new MSG, jobs, and you have an empty space there where MSG is. The city and state can do something terrific there. You have more jobs. So there'll be more new jobs, not less new jobs.
Thank you, Bill.
Basic recognition should be stopped. I mentioned Garden of Dreams.
Okay.
As I said, now on that empty spot, something to be built, jobs, et cetera. The union jobs.
Bill, I think you're going in and out, so we could barely hear you.
All right. Overall, if MSG moves to a location right there, which you can by those hotels in Pennsylvania, world-class Penn Station, world-class arena, two given.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, do, do, do we get Hector?
He's there.
Okay.
Can we unmute him?
Hector, if you can hear me, please begin. Hector, you can unmute yourself, and you may begin. Hector, if you can hear me, you may begin. Please unmute yourself. It looks like Hector's having some issues, so we'll just stand at ease. If there's anybody in the chambers who wish to testify on this special permit, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms. If there is anyone online who wishes to testify, please let us know. Hector, are you there? Okay, it looks like we're having issues with Hector. We're going to stay at ease for a few seconds to see if there's anyone else who wishes to testify.
So if you're in this Zoom, just go ahead and use the raise hand function so we can identify you if you haven't testified. Hector, we look, it looks like we're still having trouble unmuting you, so if you just want to email, you, email us your testimony, you can do so at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov.
All right. There being no other members of the public who wish to testify on LU's 245 relating to the arena text amendment and LU 246 relating to the Madison Square Garden special permit, the joint public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. Before I conclude today's business, I would be remiss if I do not celebrate the departure of somebody who's very special to the Land Use team. As being the chair for the last year and a half, I have the opportunity and the privilege to work next to Angelina, and this is going to be her last hearing with us, so I just wanted to give her a round of applause for all the work that she's been doing. And also wanted to wish her good luck on her future endeavors.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, everyone. It's been a pleasure to work with everyone on the team behind the scenes. You guys know it's not easy to put these hearings, and you have been a great chair to work with.
Thank you, Angelina. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Council, especially Councilmember Botch for saying the entire hearing, Land Use and other council staff, and the Sergeant-at-Arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.